Okay, I'm calling an order. The Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session, June 21, 2022. We have six items on the agenda for tonight to discuss. So I'm gonna set a sort of a guideline. Hopefully, we can stay within each one of them 30 minutes apiece. That will put us a three-hour meeting if we can maintain that. And we'll see how it goes. You're the first one. So Dave, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thanks, sir. The first item on your agenda is public meeting procedures and a look at, maybe in more depth, something that we've been talking about maybe for as long as I've been the town attorney. And that is, how can we be more efficient with our time while still preserving the sort of deliberative effect that the board has had for a long time? We talk about, we need some rules. And you have at your places, and I know you've been studying, the proposed set of procedures for local government boards that is put out by the School of Government. I found out today that that started in 2000, the first edition of that. So 22 years of revisions and tweaks being made on the basis of best practice and some suggestions. But as I think we've all mentioned at one time or another to our colleagues, or privately or publicly, the board generally doesn't like to follow rules because every situation is different. And we're not quite sure what circumstance we're gonna run into. So let me throw out some reasons why we've talked about having rules and why parliamentary procedure experts and the School of Government suggest rules make some sense for communities. First off, it's probably obvious. To protect the majority, we want to make sure that the board meetings are moving forward. We want to make sure that a small group is not able to hold the discussion hostage. We want to make sure we can move on to the next agenda item when a matter is not controversial for the majority, and take action and move on to the next item. Less obvious is protecting the minority. And this was the original goal when we think back to Robert's Rules. The idea is to make sure that just because there is a simple majority in the deliberative body, they can't just run roughshod over everyone else. There should be an opportunity for there to be a discussion and a debate, and perhaps the shifting of sentiment and votes in an efficient way over time. And then perhaps the item that comes up on occasion with elected boards is, we want to make sure that we're protecting the institution. We want to make sure that the decisions that are made look like they're being made in a rational, impartial way. We want to make sure that the public who views it feels as though the concerns of the community are being heard. And that is another thing that you get at a formalizing your system. And perhaps most important to us as we sit there at 11:30 in the evening, and there's still one more agenda item, is the folks who sit on local government boards, whether those are boards of commissioners, county commissioners, planning boards, they are the individuals who care a lot about most of the topics that are on the agenda. And those are the people who understand that those agenda items, in a lot of times, are complicated, they're confusing, and it never seems like there's ever going to be enough time to really hash it all out. Well, the reality of parliamentary rules, or rules and procedure, is that you just have to accept as an article of faith that there's never going to be enough time. Keep in mind that many times when you hear a presentation being made by a property owner, that property owner may have been working on the presentation that is set on your desk for plural years. And you're then, got 10, 15 minutes to sort it all out? It's never going to happen. So what you hope to be able to do is rely upon your staff, rely upon the county staff, rely upon your experts, and then be able to consider things under the rules in a way that allows you to move through it in a reasonable way and come to a reasonable conclusion and a vote. That's the concept or the goals of rules. And then I say, okay, I've sold rules real big, right? Now, oh, rules, that's what we need. We need some rules. And the reality is, we could adopt the full set of suggested rules, and it might not make any difference at all. Lots of communities have this full set of rules, but on a day-to-day basis, they don't necessarily follow them. On a day-to-day basis, they might not know them. And even if we were to adopt none of the rules, I think everyone here already realizes that it's more about custom and practice. The meetings go faster when the body is prepared. Everyone's been through the agenda, they know what's on the agenda, they've been through the package, they've made little notes or highlights or marks as to things that are of question or concern. When board members stay on target, they're only addressing the matter that is on the agenda now rather than other areas of concern that might be somewhat related or that come to mind. So as a cultural item, you have to be able to buy into the idea, there's never gonna be enough time, and we're never gonna have the ability to get done unless we stay on target. I'll admit, I had like a Star Wars image I wanted to use for this one, but I forgot it. And then, and the one that I don't think this board really needs this one is the RSPECT. The respect of the institution, respect for the offices that fellow board members hold, even when we personally dislike those individuals or we find abhorrent the position that they take on a matter. However, we still have respect for, this person's an elected official, this is still the governing body of a municipality, and it serves the community. And if that idea of respect is in place, you avoid what, and you can find it on YouTube, where folks start going after each other personally, and they bring that to the meeting. At that point, it really doesn't matter what's in these rules. Because that's really not going to really provide any sort of help at all. It's only when you've institutionalized, I'm speaking to the office of the mayor, I'm speaking to the office of the commissioner or the councilman, that this starts to work as a set of guidelines. All right, so, all those are in place. And then the final one that I know you guys have heard me say before, but I'm gonna throw it in here because it's under custom and practice, is the concept of no regrets. Okay? We're gonna go through our formal rules, we're all gonna know what our rules are, we're gonna go through that process, and at the end, we're gonna take a vote. And we're gonna make the best vote with our hearts that we can. And then we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. No regrets. We're not gonna do an agenda item, then two agenda items later, come back and revisit it and talk about that, unless you're serious about wanting to reconsider, which we can do, and we're gonna do it at a future meeting when we talk about part two of this. There's a motion to reconsider. There's a motion to rescind an action. But those are a formal process under rules. What you don't want to do as an institution, after you've shown the public and your fellow officers that you've considered something, is to express confusion or regret after. Guys, feel free to cut me off here at any point, and we can have a discussion because this is a work session. So if we have a formal process, the goal would be, everyone's had an opportunity to have their say, and now we can vote with a clear conscience and move on to the next agenda item. That hopefully reduces the risk of regrets. So in a formal parliamentary system, Congress or British Parliament, there is an idea, and we're gonna now get into sort of the nitty-gritty of this, there is an idea that when an agenda item comes up, the staff may present something, the public may have a hearing, and when it comes to the board for it to do something, the first thing that happens for it to be a legitimate action, for an item for action, is a motion. The suggested rules, and also Robert's rules, say that for small groups, that isn't necessary. Instead, there can be an opportunity for informal discussion, and that's what Roseville has always done. When an item comes back to the board, the mayor opens things up for the board to have That is useful, say, all the guides, but if you were to look at how much time we spend in a meeting, that's where our time is spent. There's no governance on it, it's loose, it can go back and forth for an unlimited period of time. And if it's of interest, there's really no telling how long that could take. So not something that you need to take action on today, but if you were to think of an item where in every agenda, there's sort of an inability to guess how long something could take, it's in the one area that's not even normal in parliamentary procedure. It's informal discussion. Let's remember some things for informal discussion as well as for after the motion has been made. Under North Carolina law, everything that you discuss has to be in the open as a public meeting. But in addition, you are not permitted to refer to things by reference such that the public who is watching would not know what you're talking about. And that is something that communities fall into the trap of violating from time to time purely unintentionally. The board members have reviewed the agenda, the staff has reviewed the agenda, everybody in the room, perhaps up from this point forward, knows what we're talking about. And so things are referred to by reference. Well, I don't like what I see here on page three. I think it's okay. This is all happening during the informal discussion. That's not permitted under North Carolina statute. It has to be clear to the reasonable observer what it is you're talking about. You also can't vote on something along the lines of, oh, next item is agenda item number four, I'll entertain a motion. Can't do that either unless sufficient numbers of copies of the agenda have been provided as printouts for folks to hold, or in the event of a remote meeting, folks have access to the digital version online. So something to think of when we're having informal discussion, it can get very cozy for all of us who know what's going on, but sometimes the public would not know. I've noticed a number of you actually have noticed that and have then said, I have a note for the public. Well, not only is that courteous, it's actually required by law for your action to be valid. So let's have that as an item in head. Throughout the meeting, whether it's following a motion, whether it's during informal discussion or at any time, and I know this is one who, if you guys were to decide to go this route, could be a little bit different. Our presiding officer for the Board of Commissioners is most often Mayor Curran. It doesn't have to be. Mayor Curran could be absent, he could be recused, he could have expressed that he personally doesn't feel as though he could be an unbiased mediator of a debate, in which case the mayor pro tem or another board member could take over. That is addressed in the suggested rules as a way to deal with that sort of a situation. But backing up from that a little bit, one thing that can help boards a lot, particularly either in informal discussion to kind of keep it under control, or for a very heated debate, is to make sure that, first of all, we're routing all of our comments to the mayor, through the mayor, you're addressing the mayor, and before you speak, you wait to be recognized by the mayor, so that the mayor can identify the person who's gonna speak, and everyone has the floor, if you will, for a while. And sometimes we actually say that, so-and-so has the floor. That's what that means. The opportunity to speak comes from whomever is the presiding officer, and for us, that is most often the mayor. So let's talk about just sort of the super basic, we've got our informal discussion, we've got these general guidelines for how to keep that in line, and then let's talk about motions, because motions are where the rubber meets the road. Motion, debate, vote. First, let's talk about seconds. We'll go in the wrong order. You guys have noticed, some of you, I've suggested to you, the suggested rules from the School of Government suggest getting rid of the second. Not sure how that bounces off any of you, but that is an idea. A not insignificant amount of time is spent by Robin trying to figure out, or by the mayor, trying to figure out who made the second. Sometimes the mayor has to look around for a few beats to see who's going to second. Then members look at each other, and we all smile. That's all time that's being wasted. And I don't remember the last time a motion failed for one of a second at the town of Roseville. And even if it did, even if no one else wanted to talk about it, it'd probably be a very quick debate, and you guys could move on. So that's a suggestion from the School of Government, is to just get rid of the second. It just hangs around. The idea of it is to make sure that there isn't just one person in the entire House of Representatives who wants to talk about something, and no one else gives a flip. I don't know that we have that problem here. Think about the idea of a second. If I could call upon somebody, how do you say, when you want to second something, how do you say? What do you say?
Second.
I second. So let's talk about how you make a motion. Keep in mind how you do a second. To make a motion fast, efficient, clear, I move. I move that, and then just say it. We struggle, as we struggle like lots of communities do, with how we make motions. The mayor often has to wait for the motion. We struggle to find the form that's been provided by the staff because we don't know where it is. No one's quite sure that it's their turn to make a motion. I don't know that anyone has ever come up to me in any of my local government and been angry that so-and-so is a motion hog. We worry about being polite. I've never had anyone say, oh, man, you know Jimmy, he always wants to make all the motions. I never get to make one. I've never heard that.
We've had that here.
Seriously, you make it, or you make it as a joke?
No, I'm serious.
Okay, well, we could adopt as a rule that you may not make more than one motion in a row until someone else has had a chance to make a motion, on a substantive motion. We could have that as a rule if that's an issue.
Can I just say, I wasn't angry about it, but we have had a motion hogger.
All right, okay. All right, so we have had a motion hog. I'm making a note.
This is before your day.
Okay. I move. You don't have to recite all the language of your motion. I move, so moved, if it's clear, so long as it's clear. You can't do it by reference. I move that we adopt the language that's contained in this piece of paper that only I have, that's no bueno. But you can do it if someone proposes something and say, I move, we adopt the position as stated by Commissioner Vilga. Done, good enough. That will work for the clerk. A lot of times, our motions begin with, and I could put up video of other communities, I think I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that, pause, okay, just, I move. We spend a lot of time struggling with the motion, and you don't like to make a motion, you make a motion. You just do it, just like you do a second. No one has ever said, I'd like to second. Just knock it out. We're gonna come back to motions in part two, and we'll talk about procedural motions that fall into the how-do-I category. We'll talk about that in a second. But I'm talking about any kind of a motion, just move. If you've got, you're feeling it, move. You've opened to the page, you're ready to go, I move. Right? Now, before you can move to do something, some things have to have happened, right? So you've made the motion, you've had your informal discussion, you make your substantive motion, then we move into debate. There is a period of time that Mayor Curran does an excellent job with of, after a motion has been made and a second has been provided, the mayor will usually restate the motion, which is best practice unless it's super-duper complicated from some land use case. He'll restate the motion and then look for debate. So there are rules for that that could help you guys, or suggestive rules that could help. The motion maker, whoever makes the motion, has the floor automatically. Not the person who cares the most, not the mayor, the motion maker has the floor first. Some communities set a time limit for the amount of time that a person can speak. Everyone gets a chance during the debate to speak. No one gets to speak twice before everyone has had an opportunity to speak once. That would be something of a change for us. Sometimes those who care the most will end up with a pro-con discussion that goes across the table. The mayor is seeking to keep control, but most of the board members are quiet, and two individuals will essentially chair the discussion. That can sometimes lead you guys to be inefficient and end up with a lot of extra time. And the mayor then is trying to sort out equities. I want to make sure everybody's been heard, have it caught everybody's attention. So what we want to do is, motion maker goes first, and then indicates so that you can be recognized after that, so that the mayor can call you and you can speak to the mayor. Now, you don't have to say mayor, but in your head, the mindset is that you're always addressing the chair, rather than saying, you know, Eric is a poopy head, and his idea is really dumb, and I don't know why he said that. Right? If that's what your head idea is, it's probably gonna cause the meeting to have problems that are going to appear to the world as though there's a respect issue, where there's something percolating underneath, where if you're just stating your position or why you would go in a different direction, if you feel like you're sort of presenting that to a mediator, which is what the presiding officer is doing, that can seem, or provide a much more comfortable way to do things. And then, here's a suggestion. Some communities do it, and I don't know if it works for us. Everyone gets to speak once, and no one gets to speak more than twice. We've already had informal discussion, we've called for the substantive motion, we've had a debate, which has involved everyone now having had the opportunity to speak twice. And there's never, as I said at the beginning, there's never enough time. You guys could go on and on and on, but the chances of someone shifting their position at this point is highly unlikely, and it may be time to take action. I've used 25 minutes of my 30, and so I will leave you guys with this for the next time. How do I? Motions, part two. Once the substantive motion, I move that we approve something. There are procedural motions that can provide things that answer the question, how do I? And some of you have called me after a meeting, how could I have, or how could I have done this? Those are all procedural motions. They're listed here. I don't remember how many there are, honestly, most people use maybe four or five, but I'm gonna guess there's 14 procedural motions. But they're a nice tool. A motion to suspend the rules. You guys have a rule that says everybody speaks twice. But then, you guys are thinking, I think we need to hash on this some more. Motion to suspend the rules and continue the debate for another 15 minutes. Right? That passes, you vote on it immediately, you vote on it before the substantive motion, and you keep on going. And you guys have a way then to figure things out. How do I? This came up before our meeting. How do I know when meetings might end? We could say that all of our meetings will run for a presumptive three hours or four hours. And with a procedural motion, we could extend to provide additional time. Because the alternative might be a special meeting, continuance to the next day, or making the next regular meeting agenda even longer. We'll talk a little bit about quorum in voting. Most of those you guys don't have any choices about. Those are legal requirements that we have that sometimes come up, but they are contained in the procedures. Managing the agenda, I've received a number of questions about, where does the agenda come from? And how do we alter the agenda? And what's the right way of doing that? And how do we deal with the consent agenda? Public comment and hearings, the mayor and I have talked about that plenty. How do we make sure that the public has a great opportunity to speak that's meaningful, but we still have an opportunity to go home before the sun comes up? And finally, would we consider adopting the rules from the School of Government as a base with our local flavor edits that we might make? And we'll try to do that when the next appropriate work session is, as the board decides when you guys manage the agenda. And that's what I have.
Questions for David?
Yes.
I have a question. So how do we do this now that we have to say whatever, like the...
Let's do it mayor Curran style. Three people have asked to be recognized, mayor calls on someone.
I think Daniel was first.
To avoid, I missed my microphone. To avoid going in circles to where an item could go for a long time. How do we stop that? Is that a point of order, or request for more information, or just look at the facts? But just avoiding the circle and circle?
So the formal, there's two ways. One would be adopt a rule about presumptively, everybody goes twice. That's one way. That's a nice way to do it, because then it would be a rule already. And then you'd have to, you're changing the default. Now we'd have to do something to continue. And then the more common way is to call the question. So you can call the question, which is formally called end the debate, and that is in order after everyone has had the opportunity to speak once. You can't call the question, though, after you've spoken and decide you don't want to hear from anybody else. That's not a thing. Because again, we're protecting both the majority and the minority in the debate.
Everybody going more than once, or twice.
Right. I'm not sure who else had a question.
Thank you, sir. Ashay?
It's about the speaking twice. So how does that work? So somebody asks a question, somebody else asks a question, same person asks another question. Who's giving tally of this?
Okay, so now, once you're in the debate, you've made a motion, you're no longer asking questions. You're stating your positions, your policy ideas, and trying to persuade others to vote the way you think you should vote. Informal discussion might be the last time for any questions to be in order, but hopefully questions were asked ahead of the meeting with the staff, right? Because we prepared and we went through the agenda, we know where our questions are. So by the time you're here, if you have a question, it's probably a clarification item. It's not a what are we doing item. And that helps the meeting move along, makes the institution look more informed, that kind of value. Does that make sense?
Question number two. How does that work sometimes when you ask staff and they'll defer to an expert or something?
So...
And I know I'm mixing up different...
Right. So let's say we're at the beginning of informal discussion, the mayor's recognizing, you guys are talking among yourselves, and the mayor would like to call upon staff to ask a question. Anything that happens in informal discussion is truly informal. We're gonna try to keep the goals of, as we talked about first, we're gonna address our que, we're gonna ask to be recognized by the mayor, we're gonna address our comments to the mayor, and the mayor as the mediator, I mean, as I went through this, it makes like the mayor's job seems super easy. You guys have a hard job. He's the one who's gotta figure all that out. Whoever is the presiding officer is gonna need to deal with those equities. Call upon the staff, staff says, well, I'd like to ask so-and-so, so-and-so comes up, thank you, you've got your answer. That sort of thing is totally fine. But you'd want to do that in, either as part of the hearing, if it's a hearing item, or in the informal discussion at the very latest. By the time there's a motion on the floor, it does not need to be going back out to the public.
Sheila, you have a question?
Yeah, I have several. Maybe it did happen, and I missed it. Is there an orientation that happens when new members come on the board that has this information? I feel like that would be tremendously helpful. It would have been helpful for me as a new board member when I was new. So that's my first question. And then, secondly, at what point are we enacting this? I know you just said, let's use this tonight, but it sounded like there was a part two. So I'm getting a little confused on the process that you're using. So I'm not sure what's going on there. And then, my third question concern, I don't know if it's a question or not. You talked about lots of discussions and debate. I also think there's a point of board members understanding that they can talk to each other before the meeting, and there may not be that understanding, and staff. So I have watched a lot of other towns meet, and they meet for an hour and a half. Because we're getting our information real time, because we may not understand, or you may not get all the answers to your questions, and then if something comes up, that triggers another question because we're human and not robots. So those are my three kind of points of concern.
So like, everybody who stands in front of a group and gets... So like, everybody who stands in front of a group and gets a three-part question, everybody starts with the third one, right? Because it's the only one you can still remember. As to the third one, you are absolutely right. I called it "prepare." And I have not discussed this with the manager. Many communities have a policy or a practice through management in a manager town where the expectation is that the board members will contact the manager's office, and the manager will delegate those questions out to the staff, so that information is being funneled in advance of the meeting. The only risk to that, and it's one that has been expressed to me here in Roseville, is that it can look like it all got cooked ahead of time. So it goes from sort of, it's about the appearance, right? And so we want our rules to protect the institution, protect the town, and protect the public. So questions to sort out questions make a lot of sense. Those then hopefully get stated publicly, not, maybe in the informal discussion, to make sure that everyone is clear, and someone following would have an opportunity to understand how. But you eliminate the sort of new question problem that was not anticipated, because if you had questions, you hopefully were able to get some good answers ahead of time, which makes everybody feel better. The question as to orientation. I will tell you, I do not know. I do know that all newly-elected board members are encouraged, if not required, to attend the School of Government orientation, which has really broken down since 2020, but is now back on track. And we did have a conversation during the last election about formalizing an orientation process, and I would have to defer to Mr. Arnold on what we want to do with that for the next election.
So let me just clarify that. I have been to that school, the Local Government Board School, and they do not cover these rules. They do not. I sat through the whole class when I was first in, because I thought that's what I was getting, like, how you do this. It was more about managing funds, things to look out for, that type of thing. But it was not this. I think you and I had that discussion as well.
And it's because most of these, if you know, most of them aren't law.
Right.
They're best practice.
Gotcha.
And I noticed the School of Government agenda looks very much like keep-you-out-of-jail sort of answers.
Right.
Rather than best-practice sort of answers, which is great. I'm glad they're doing that. I mean, but it's necessary, but perhaps not efficient. That's a great point. And then the second was, what is the process for this? I will openly admit that I thought this work session was going to take a long time, because we were going to try to get through all of this tonight. But looking at the other agenda items, because this is not a time-sensitive issue, instead, I tried to focus on culture items that maybe we test out, without imposing any rules on anyone. And then, when it's appropriate, given our agenda load, we come back, discuss some of this, and then task the staff with writing it up, so that at a regular meeting, eventually you guys could vote.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Let's see if Paul has a question.
So I think the only question I have is getting rid of the second. I did read that part, because we're a smaller group, but I think we've, in the past, we've had, I can only remember one time, where we had somebody make a motion, and then it just sat, and we didn't do anything with it. So I think we'd need to know how to get out of that motion to make a second motion, if that, I think everybody listens for the second to make sure it's alive still, if that makes sense.
Right. And so in communities that, in communities, I don't know of one. So it is the most sort of unique idea, and it is a place where time gets wasted. You would, motion would be on the table, mayor would restate the motion, the motion maker clearly would have something to say on the topic, no one else would say anything, no one else wants to speak, a vote's in order.
Okay.
And you could be done. And that vote, I assume, would be no.
Right.
And then, a new substantive motion would be in order.
Okay. Yep. Thanks.
April, you got a question, anything?
I just need one more clarification on the "speak twice." So am I correct that in the informal discussion, we're having a discussion? You're not limited to speaking twice?
It could be three times, but no, this, I had thrown it out as an item that made more sense, once we're already, we're already tired, right? We've had the informal discussion, we've got the motion, right? We've debated it. Everyone has now, everyone who wants to say something has said something, and everyone's had the opportunity to say something. The challenge you can have is that you might have a couple of members, a minority, who just want to keep talking. And so that means you have two possibilities, as Commissioner said. You either have a presumptive two times, or someone's going to have to call the question. And that could lead to hard feelings, depending upon how the community is organized.
This is during, after the debate, during the debate?
This is during the debate.
You speak during the debate. That is when you are trying to state your case to get others to vote your way. Is that what you...
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
That's your argument, your debate. See if there's support for that idea.
I do have one other question.
Okay.
So what if you don't get a motion the first time? How long do you wait for that? Because we've had that happen before as well.
What happened? I can't hear you.
When we didn't get a motion, and then it was held until somebody spoke? How long is that supposed to really happen?
So that's a procedural motion. So we're going to do that in part two, and that's a real cop-out by me, but that's okay. If it's not something the board wants to take action on, there are procedural ways to get rid of it, and move on to the next agenda item. But what is painful, 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 is not having rules and not having the tools at our place to tell us, "Okay, now what do we do about this awkward silence?" Because no one wants to take action on it, or does want to take action but is not sure how to say it. And so hopefully, we would adopt the rules, and then, what a lot of communities do, some communities do, is they just have a laminated cheat sheet of all the motions, and you just sort of look at it at your place.
Dan, I think you had another question.
Yes, sir. It's more of a comment, is that in December, late December, when I went to the School of Government, they must have changed things, because they went over Roberts Rule. That's how I became a, that's how I became a good fan of Roberts Rule.
They changed it, yeah.
Hmm. That's interesting.
And they actually did a scenario that was very amusing, in how a meeting goes by. So, and that was a two-day class. And also, that was part of requirement, and as well as ethics training.
Well, thank you, David.
Okay.
We'll look forward to session two. Will you be able to wrap it up in two sessions, or...
I called it an occasional series, but it's at the discretion of the board.
So it's whether you get renewed or not, huh?
So that y'all know, that discussion was 12 minutes. After I was done, that was 12 minutes for you guys.
Yep.
It's interesting. Goes by fast. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Next item, number two. Town resolution pertaining to the proposed unification of the Roseville Rural Fire Department, Is that still on the agenda? You want to talk about that some?
Yes.
I turned it over to you.
Okay. So about 18 months have gone by since we started our initial discussions with Roseville Rural Fire District on possibly unifying with the town. Speaking of time, 18 months, where we had several meetings as a working group. Commissioner Sneed sat through those. Mayor Curran was part of that. Amy Stevens, myself, and then we ultimately brought in Lisa Alston also, for the town.
I was a part of that group initially as well.
What's that?
I said I was a part of that initially as well.
Yes, you were, part of it, right. And we reached a conclusion of that effort, and those, if you ever go on our website, under "Fire," you can see all the agendas, all the minutes, all the notes related to eight sessions. And out of that came the goal that we would move forward in reaching an agreement with unification starting July 1, 2024. And the first step in that agreement is a resolution. The resolution's a statement of intent, that you intend to do an agreement, but it's also to try and capture most, all the elements of everything that will occur or be laid out in agreement. An agreement will be much more detailed and much more binding than a resolution. So as we went through and started this resolution development, another smaller working group worked together, and that was Commissioner Steed, myself, and Amy Stevens, with the fire chief, deputy fire chief, and a member of the Rural Fire District Board, along with Greg Grayson, developed two resolutions. One is the Rural Fire District Resolution, because they need to adopt it, and the other one is a town resolution. Tonight, in front of you, is a town resolution, and I just briefly want to go through that with you, and walk through it, and then let you know the status of where the fire department is, fire district is, on their resolution. So the resolution speaks about various things, and I highlighted in my memo, such as unification date will be July 1, 2024. The town agrees to assume full responsibility for the provisions of the fire protection services, including responsibility for all fire protection systems, equipment, real property, and such, on July 1, 2024. That all department full-time employees, as of effective date of unification, will be permitted to participate in the local government employee retirement system. Remember, that's one of the driving items that has driven this, to get us together and talk about this. The town desires a contract with Wake County Government to continue to do that for provision of fire services outside the town, and just as the department has been doing under the past, under the county's cost-share agreement system, and will fully meet the county's contractual agreement for the municipalities serving unincorporated areas in the county. The town will proceed to hire a full-time fire chief by January 2024. And just a moment on that, one of our thinkings was that it'd be good to get somebody aboard before the unification actually takes place. They would be part of the fire department, they would be participating in, but it would be a town employee, full-time fire chief, and then when the transition occurs, they would be the primary ones responsible for the department. But they also have some time to gain that access to that. Instead of waiting until after unification, we thought it was important that we have a full-time fire chief on in advance. The Roseville Rural Fire District budget reserves will be dedicated to fire services only. That was a pretty big, important part of their interest, was that they didn't want their reserves to come back to town and essentially get absorbed into the general fund for other purposes. They wanted some commitment that would be used for fire services. That an architectural review of the existing fireplace will take, fire station, excuse me, will take place in 2022. One of the things that came to our attention was that that station is now 40-plus years old. And there are things in there, just my, I can see that need to be reviewed and make sure they are meeting current day standards for a fire station. So we have agreed with the county to fund, and you've put in your budget, a review of the existing fire station. We're ready to probably start that as early as August, so we can get some answers as to what may be needed and required for that fire station, either remodel, or if it can be remodeled to meet existing conditions, or what are their solutions? And then also, the...
Just to be clear.
Yep.
So we will see options on that. In other words, we'll see option of remodeling versus option of a new building versus option of...
I don't know if we'll see options, I don't know if we should, I don't know if I can predict that. It may come back and say, "All you have to do is this," and maybe that, or it might, I actually have to go back and look at the, what we put as proposal. It should evaluate fully the existing conditions of the station, and what would be needed to make it up to today's standards. If it cannot be met up to today's standards, it will talk about the options to do that, I think.
Yeah, but I think, I think our thinking is, you know, if it's on cost...
Right.
A certain amount of money to redo that one, but you can do a new one cheaper.
That's right.
We should, we should have that option, I would think.
I think that's, I think that will be, I think that'll flow from that study.
Okay.
And I hear what you're saying, and I think that's something we need to make sure it happens, if it's better. And, you know, quite frankly, is that the right location? If the station is remodeled, can it exist on that existing footprint or not? If it needs to be rebuilt, can you rebuild on that existing footprint of land also right now? So, but I can't per se remember exactly the proposal, but it says clearly, mayor, that options will be evaluated. I'll have to look, relook at that, and then I'll, I'll make sure, clearly, make sure it addresses that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, the agreement also outlines what happens in the interim for the budget development and approval process, and that started taking place this year, is that, starting this year and next year, you will be seeing the budget from the fire department and have the ability to prove it and work with it, too. So those are kind of the highlights. The resolution calls out maybe some other things in there. Couple things I do want to bring to attention in the resolution that hasn't taken place. This resolution does assume that the Rural Fire District Board has passed their resolution. So if you look at the fifth "whereas," it says, "Whereas on June 6, 2022, the Department, Department Board of Directors adopted a resolution in favor of offering the specified assets." They have not done that yet. So that resolution is not correct. It'll have to be corrected. It is the consultant's opinion that they need to adopt their resolution first, because their resolution says they're asking you to adopt your resolution. You're not going to them and saying, "Hey, we want you." They need to come and ask you to do that. So they have not acted upon the resolution, and today I got an update on that. I have not seen the resolution come back from them, but I know that they are modifying it. And so, based upon the modifications, and we'll talk about what we do next with this resolution, but based upon modifications, that may delay my recommendation when we take action on this resolution, and how this resolution spills out. I do know the one thing that is deficient in our resolution here, and isn't deficient in their resolution that they caught, is they are pretty strong in wanting to make sure that they have something that addresses the life after the July 1, 2024, for particularly the foundation. They have a group, they have a foundation that they have ownership of the old truck. They also have proceeds that goes, and it's spelled out a little bit in here, about the everyday fund, rainy day fund. But essentially, it's their fundraising efforts, it's their ability to stay active. Most communities that have taken on districts' adoptions and absorbed them, have a foundation board that stays around and owns some of the history of the fire department, so it maintains the integrity of the fire department, ownership, and the history. I know that was not addressed enough in this resolution. They do want it that addressed. I do think they're going to be asking for a commitment from us to a facility of some sort.
I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm not really sure where I saw it at, but who owns the building at the chambers then? And I know there's leases on the building. How does that work in terms of, is the town absorbing that, too?
Mm-hmm.
Because I thought where I read it, they wanted to retain that, but who, who would they be?
I don't think they would retain, they may have said that, but that's what they're determining right now. The assumption is, the agreement at this stage, the way I understand it, Michelle, is that the town would take all the ownership of all the property and all the assets, except for identified assets that are associated with the history of the department, such as the old trucks, any of the historic artifacts and such that they have. But we would take the ownership of the land.
Of the land?
Mm-hmm.
What about the real estate?
What's that?
What about the real estate?
To include the real estate.
To include?
Include the real estate.
Okay. And then I think I saw something, I'm sorry, I don't have my highlight a copy, about, was it CDs or something? Did I see that? There was something about some deposits.
That's just called out that we would, we would essentially get those, too. Essentially, all assets would be transferred over to the town. Essentially, all assets would be transferred over to the town.
I don't think that's how I read it, but I'm sorry I didn't-
Let me see, if you can find it.
Yes, it includes all cash on deposit in all accounts controlled by the department.
Where are you at, Ronnie?
It's number four.
Yeah.
Scroll down to number four.
Number four.
Without limitation, the transfer of all department assets except for the department charter, the fireman days fund, which we talked about with access to state equipment and specified assets. So those are the only non items that won't be transferred over. Everything else would be transferred over to the town.
And they would maintain any type of repairs or whatever is necessary for the, the trucks that they-
In the interim period between now and July, July 1, 2024. They would function-
Ongoing, ongoing maintenance of the vehicle.
Ongoing, after that.
And I thought, and I don't see it in here, but I thought they mentioned something in April about funding them a annual budget line or something.
And that may be what they're coming back with as a recommendation too.
I think that's what they were suggesting and I don't know. I mean, that's something, we got to see what Wake Forest and Knightdale and the other towns are doing. Because I could see that, you know, if, if they want to maintain stuff that we would, any other chamber, almost like the chambers, but I think that's what I remember. You remember him saying?
I don't remember all that now.
I don't remember the amount, but.
They want assurances there'd be some help to do the, keep the, keep the old equipment such up.
Also, I remember the beginning of these conversations, which goes back beyond 16 months. There was, there was conversation about the full-time and the part-time and the volunteers.
Yes.
But here it only mentioned the full-time.
Yes.
Full-time, what's going to happen with the part-timers and the volunteers?
We could probably try and address that in this resolution. It will be addressed in contract, in agreement. But the intent of our discussions and helping Mayor, Commissioner Sneed, was that we always said that we maintain the integrity of volunteer.
And I believe by law, it was by law because of insurance purposes that they would all have to come. And if we could not only accept the full-time, we had to accept everybody. Do you remember that?
I think you do have an option, but I can't remember exactly, but I don't think we ever just didn't say we would not.
Right.
Because that was a big discussion then because that was a concern.
Right.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So, you know, and I read this, I read this a few, few days ago and now you mentioned it. So we don't even mention the volunteers in this at all.
Uh-uh.
Not in this resolution.
I think we probably should.
Yep.
Because it's going to be based off of this, that final resolution.
Right.
I think we probably should mention it. I did pick up on that, but that's a good point.
Okay, so then my last question is, again, it's real estate, it's the land. So all land is going to the town, to be absorbed by the town, including those various lots? I don't know, there are two or three of them here and there.
Yes.
Turned over to the town as well.
Yes. Ownership of their three, three outside the main station lots also would be transferred over to the town.
All righty, thank you.
And I guess, I guess, and that may be what they work, I guess there's going to be some details around.
Right.
So I, I think, I think they would want us to have restrictions of how we use it, you know, where we can't just sell it and make money off of it and need to use it for fire or hopefully we can use it for municipal use or something.
Yeah, I'm not certain, I would advise you of that still. You need to, you need to, we need to carefully walk that one and see what we are.
But I, no, the other option is they keep it. I'm not sure we want to do that either.
Meaning who, the?
I think, I think we absorb it and we control it, but we'll see how they, how we realize that.
That's really good because the county's involved in that too though, right?
No, they didn't help by this.
In regards to where the, another fire department would go.
And Dave, I'm not sure-
Or did that change?
Mm-hmm. They would, yeah.
Okay.
Dave, I'm not sure if you looked, if there's any deed restrictions on them or not. I don't, I think it's all verbal restrictions that we put on them when it, on them from the landowners.
We, we have not done any title diligence on, on, on the land or on any of the assets at this time.
That probably won't take place till we get into the agreement.
So will they be deeded at us day, at the end of the day? Is it like changing deeds on it?
That's what we agree to.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah, yes. That is, that is, that's how we would handle it. We would handle this as a, we would, we would likely convey the assets out of the fire department entity to the town rather than seeking to just merge, if you will. Rather, all the assets and liabilities will be absorbed. But how, how we do that has, has not even begun to be considered. So that, that is something to be addressed.
This is one last question, I can promise. This is just number two. So when you have the, the employees that are full-time being absorbed by the town, how does the, how does that package work in terms of their, oh my God, the word just escaped me. The, yeah, like their time, like does their time count?
Yes, we've, we've assured them they would.
Okay.
That would be spelled out in agreement also.
Awesome, good.
We've talked to them about no, no modifications to their current status or pay plan at this point. The pay plans, pay plans actually ran in Minister Buddy County.
But their time on the job would be calculated and used, okay.
No, it would not be used towards the retirement. Retirement, that's-
That's what I was getting at, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so retirement, that's the one thing that we did learn is you do not get your time in place until you become into the system. You do not get to buy, you do not get to take your time previously and have it count towards retirement. So when they come in July, let's just assume July 1, 2024, everybody comes over, that's the start of their time in the retirement system. And they start from there building their time. They don't come in, if they came in and had 10 years' experience, they don't get to come into retirement system with 10 years of experience. That is a state statute.
Oh, wow.
That's the, that's the downside of delaying the merger.
And that, and that's, that's right. That's why we want to move this along for those employees if they're interested in getting to participate in that.
Every day they wait, there's one more day they don't get retirement.
So if somebody was on, and I'm sorry, if somebody's there like 25-ish years, it does not count towards retirement?
Not in that when they come in July 1, 2024. Now, they had their own retirement systems already in place. They've been participating in those in their 401, 457 accounts, but they will not count towards the North Carolina retirement system.
Oh, okay.
She, you got a question?
I just forgot. Wow.
I hadn't heard either.
Oh, I do, I do have a question. Why do we have a resolution and an agreement?
Because the agreement is going to be a very lengthy contractual relationship. Resolution's going to be a statement of intent that lays out, lays out the parameters of the agreement. So essentially, we're trying to resolve some of these issues like we just talked about, these two or three that we just missed in the resolution, so we can make sure they get put forward. But the agreement's going to be a legal binding agreement and it's going to talk about things like the deeding of the transfer of the land.
So the agreement will go into greater detail?
And it's going to take a period of time to work through.
I just don't want us working from two documents.
Yep, so you'll, you'll adopt this one and then away we go using this for the basis of your agreement.
Yeah. Gotcha.
And to follow up on that as a matter of further consideration, my guess is that we would handle this with Articles of Merger to take the whole thing to ensure that we have all of the assets and liabilities rather than try to just inventory that with individual conveyance documents.
All right, thank you. Right, April, you need?
If I may, so July 6 will not be your date for this. I had originally put in a memo recommending July 6 for adoption. It's not going to be ready because we're going to see what they come back with. And then Mayor, I'm going to call you and Commissioner Sneed and Amy and I to meet with them again to hear their feedback. And we may have to come back again with this group. If it's minor things, I would put it on the regular agenda for consideration soon. You know, considering this took two months and we've been talking about this for 18 months and the agreement's going to take months, it's going to be a lengthy document. Wake Forest documents probably about agreements, probably about 20 to 25 pages long because it spells out every step. So we need to get started on that or we're not going to get to July 1, 2024. So anyway.
But just clarify, this will be on July 6 or not?
I don't think it will be.
Not the proclamation?
I don't, I don't think you're going to, because we're going to have amendments to this now.
You're going to amend it.
And we'll just see if we can get together. And if we can get together and get it done and get the amendments, then I'll bring it back to you for regular agenda. If not, it'll be August.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Very good. April, you good? I know you've spent a lot of time and appreciate the time you spend in, in helping with this. Thanks a lot for that. And thanks staff too. Amy puts a lot of time in trying to make this work too, so thanks for that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item three, RF, RRFD loan agreement for rescue truck. And I think I got an email today, I don't know if you guys got it too, that the truck came in, so. And I think you saw it.
I did.
Did you get a ride on it?
No, I was, I was in passing, so, but it's-
They, they have parked it and they're not putting it on the street because they, quite frankly, don't have a loan on it yet. So quickly on this one, and Dave will follow up with my brief intro, but I received a contact from Wake Electric Membership Corporation, legal counsel who had learned that the unification was in works and they are offering a zero interest, I can't remember how, what the term is.
10 years.
10 years?
Yep.
To the fire department for the purchase of the truck that just came in. The legal counselor was insistent based upon this information that the town consider or not consider, must sign an agreement of obligation that we recognize that this would be our obligation if the unification were to take place. After Dave and I talked, Dave talked to legal counsel, I'll let Dave report out on, but we've agreed to put this in front of you for your consideration to make everybody feel better, I think, right? Is that a good assessment?
Correct. So given the requirements of the lender, in this case, Wake Electric Co-op, this is something that, that either the town agrees to join in to reiterate that in the event of a merger, we would also be assuming the debt that's being incurred by the fire department. And only in the event of a merger would that, would that obligation shift to the town. There, there are certainly details of the loan documents that would require amendment if the town were to take this on. But my guess is that that's not going to be terribly different from all the other nitty-gritty items we find as part of the merger. And certainly, we would have always assumed that if we were to merge with the fire department, we would be getting both the assets and the liabilities. So to a certain extent, this is little more than providing some reliance and confidence to Wake that this is something that we support in concept and that we understand is going to be something that's in our future as something we need to deal with in the event that we do merge.
Question, sir. So for the first two years, they will take care of, so that's 80,000. So for the next eight years after that, come the merger, the town will be responsible for it. So as I was reading, it say July 1, 2023 is our merger. And the payment is actually due on July 1 of every year.
Correct.
But, but the loan is 0% interest unless there's a late penalty, meaning one day will put us at 18%.
Right.
So we definitely got to get that in before.
Sure, and we, I would recommend that we treat this for only what it is, which is an acknowledgement and a confirmation that if we merge, we acknowledge that we would proceed in accordance with the loan documents that the fire department is writing into. We are not assuming that debt now and there's no mechanism for that to occur unless we were to merge. I would suggest that we would not want to merge until we've had an opportunity to revisit all of the loan documents for this as well as any other contracts, liabilities that the fire department might have. And, and my guess is we're going to find some things. We're also going to identify via their budgets as we go forward.
Right.
Where, where things are being paid for. So there's a, there's a, in any merger transaction, there's a fair amount of diligence that's going to be involved. Honestly, Kelly and I didn't, didn't necessarily as a legal matter think this was necessary because regardless of this, fire department has certainly the right to enter into this $400,000 loan and it would just become something that's part of our discussions later on. So it's, it's nice that it's out here, it provides some assurance to Wake EMC, but certainly it's going to be more conversation in the future.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's the way I was looking at it too. Just like you were saying, I don't see where it affects us one way or the other. But I was trying to think and it just kind of, you know, recently come to me, why is it so important Wake EMC is, I guess it could, three years from now, we, we say, come get your truck. We're not going to make payments on it, we don't want it, you come get it and they don't want to, they don't have to repossess a truck, I guess.
Counsel, counsel expressed a variety of concerns and worries that, that they might have. It's not my place to weigh the, the value of those concerns. I just know that it is a sincerely held concern. But you're absolutely right. In fact, the security for this is more than the truck. They're pledging all their assets and, and it will be a liability that they have to deal with. It is nice to see however, and for those who deal with finance, we, we or they have the right to pay it off at any time.
So there's no prepayment penalty?
There's no prepayment. So Amy's not here to advise us, who knows what we might decide down the road rather than having to deal with this payment structure. The town may decide to just move on.
So for instance, the one example, Wake Forest, when they did their unification, they had a similar, the Wake Forest Department, Fire Department had a similar arrangement, but they were on year eight of their loan and Wake Forest chose just to pay it off. But that could be an option also for us.
So this, does this go out of proceeds that they already have versus the town?
It's going to be funded by both county and our proceeds, our town, sure.
All right, I have a little question, just, just trying to understand this. Maybe I'll ask later, never mind.
It is a fair point that we're already paying for some of this.
Half.
I asked the question while she's formulating her next question.
Yes, go right ahead.
Just clarifying, on the proclamation, I did see something about no further debt. So they can't, once that proclamation is signed, they can't enter into any other debt agreements. Is that correct? Did I read that right?
I believe that is correct. It's been a number of weeks since I looked at this. That's standard boilerplate that they would need to consent for them to take on additional debt.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're inclined and okay with this, I would put on consenting general for July 6 to approve and then the Wake County knows, Wake Electric knows the schedule and they'd wait for my signature and we would send it to them after that if you approve it on July 6.
Yeah, Dave, you've had a chance to look at it.
I have.
I do want you to recognize as we get educated in cost of fire departments, this truck's And today, when I visited the station to look at truck, the Pierce dealer, the Pierce representative was there, he said, when they placed the order 18 months ago, thereabouts, 17 months ago, 16 months ago, Pierce has had 18% increase on this truck alone. Used to take six to nine months to build a truck of this type, now it's 18 to 24 months. So it just, it's just kind of this statement of times we're living in right now for this kind of stuff. So we got a deal, quote unquote, fire department got a deal, getting in.
But the cost was 440, right?
Yep. The cost actually is 659, 420. They're paying $200,000 down payment.
Gotcha. I knew I saw 400. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So now if you bought it today, be 18% more than that.
That's right. That's all I have on this one.
Thank you. Thank you. Item four, bicycle plan and greenway plan study final review.
I think the battery's going dead. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Catherine with McAdams is here to present the final recommendations for both the bicycle plan, that's a partnership with a grant from NC DOT, and our Roswell Greenway Plan as well. So, I'm going to turn over to Catherine at this time to go through those final recommendations and any updates since the last meeting since February, when she was here to present an update at that time.
Hey, everyone, thanks for having me back to provide an update on the bike plan and the greenway plan.
What happened to our TV? There we go. She had...
Just take a second to come up.
Bug a cable?
I think so.
He broke it. Sorry. Did you hit that bug again?
That was a screen while you were getting...
Some people is this one. PC one.
Or not.
David, did you break it?
Probably.
It worked for David. You like David Brew?
PC two is your blue screen.
It dies fast.
You had it before. You know, that's what I saw, when you push PC two.
I think we unplugged it.
Thank you though.
No. That was not plugged in, man. It worked.
JG, I'm going to keep pushing this, let me know if you get shocked.
There we go, now let's do it. PC two is not in.
We go to PC two?
That should be PC one, should be the one.
How does it seem like it got in?
Yeah, there's a screen, there we go.
Oh, we got to share screen, that's what it is. It's not duplicated screens.
Keep your finger off the dial.
I get it all the way down. Display.
The new PC, by the way. There we go.
Are you missing software?
It's the way we display the screen, but it's not controlling that, it's controlling this screen. Maybe a two, three minute recess, potentially, Mayor?
Yeah, let's do a five minute recess, start back at 7:15. You got to switch your computers out, you think, or what?
Worst case scenario, yes, sir, we can.
Okay, let's do that, we'll do a recess, let's get back at 7:15 if possible.
PC one, you're on PC two now?
It's not showing up online either.
JG, I think I'm on PC two.
So, PT, yes, that's this one here. So, PC one should be plugged in to this one. But it's the screen sharing, how you display with multiple screens, that's what I need to get to. But when it pulls it up here, I can't, it's showing it up there and I can't control it.
To go over the updates for the bicycle plan, the greenway plan, since we last met in late February, I think. And since then, this is just a project overview to date. So at the last meeting, we talked about the first three phases of the bicycle plan and the greenway plan's development. And so, you know, we did a project visioning in May and June of last year. That was the kickoff for the project. And again, just to reiterate from last time, we did develop the bike plan and the greenway plan concurrently, since there was a lot of overlap there, and we merged the community engagement efforts. So both plans followed the exact same schedule. And then, so moving through the schedule, we did the existing conditions analysis in the summer. And then, in late fall through the winter, we worked on plan recommendations. So greenway network recommendations, bicycle plan, network recommendations. We presented our findings to the steering committee members, to staff. We also had a public meeting where we tabled at Fall Fest. And we got input from the public in addition to the survey that we also launched in the summer of last year as well. Then following that, we did another survey with the public in November and December, asking the community to rank project priorities. And that's kind of where we presented initial findings from that survey and the network recommendations to you all in February. And so from late February through the end of May, we've been working on the implementation and the final plan. So we've been developing the plan report, and so we finished that draft in late May. And we presented that to the steering committee on May 24th. And then we had a public meeting on May 25th to get input. And then we had a public input period for two weeks following that. We also had the staff input period during that time as well. And so we just received all the public input from staff and community members. And so right now, we're working on finalizing the plan and incorporating those minor recommendations that we had through that process. And so that kind of leads us to where we are today. And then next steps would of course be final plan and plan adoption, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. So now what I'll do is just quickly give you kind of a tour of the bike plan and the greenway plan. And, you know, just also for the sake of time, I'm focusing on the last three chapters. So the network recommendations, the policy recommendations, and implementation, since we went through existing conditions like visioning and goals at the last public, at the last work session. So the tour kind of sorts at chapter four. So for network recommendations for the bicycle plan, again, we are focusing on on-street bicycle recommendations because the greenway plan speaks to off-street recommendations, so side paths and greenways. But as JG mentioned, the bike plan is an NCDOT-funded plan. And as a requirement for that, we have to include both on- and off-street recommendations within the bike plan. So while the language of the bike plan really speaks to those on-street network recommendations, we do reference all of the text and guidance for the off-street network recommendations, those greenways and side paths, in the bike plan so that they can reference the greenway plan for additional information, just to kind of give you all a context for that. So this is the overall network of, you know, that was the greenway plan in the bicycle plan networks. And then side by side, you can see, the left-hand side shows the on-street network for the bicycle plan, and the right-hand side shows the recommended greenway and side path network, which is the off-road network. So in terms of network refinement, since we last were together in February, there hasn't been too many tweaks to the bicycle plan in terms of network recommendations. And then also just to briefly go over the lines and the map so that y'all understand, the dashed blue lines are recommended bicycle lanes. The dashed darker blue lines are recommended separated bike lanes. And then the dashed purple lines are the separate, the recommended bicycle boulevards. Those are, again, shared street accommodations, really just wayfinding signage and shared lane markings to be able to bring bicyclists from residential neighborhoods to the bicycle lanes and greenways and side paths. So in terms of refinements of the network for the bike plan, we just have a couple minor tweaks. So Granite Falls Boulevard, we did have a separated bike lane all the way from West Young Street to Burlington Mills Road. But actually, after the February work session, when we were talking about the loop around the north and south part of downtown, we revised that recommendation. And we have a side path along Granite Falls Boulevard from Main Street Park all the way to Burlington Mills rather than a separated bicycle lane all the way through. And then also, this is not reflected here. This is a recent recommendation. And so we're working on editing those maps this week. We will extend the proposed side path along Jonesville Road all the way from Main Street to Mitchell Mill Road. Before, we had a bike lane all on that corridor, and the side path was just from Main Street to Lewisburg Road. And I'll talk to the specific any greenway network recommendations when we talk about the greenway plan, but just want to show them side by side. And then, oh, one last thing, we did include additional bicycle lane, bicycle boulevards in the northern part of town between Wade Avenue and Jones Dairy Road. And that was from input from developers and local community members there. And then this is just to kind of show you, this is, these are all spreads from the plan, just for reference. These show all the projects. It provides roadway recommendations, intersection treatments. And then it provides roadway characteristics like roadway width, number of travel lanes, stuff like that, to give you some context. So these are, these are the listed all the projects within the bicycle plan, so it provides some context for the map. Now getting into project priorities, so like I'd mentioned last time, the project priorities were developed based on criteria that were guided by the planned goals. And so the planned goals are, you know, accessibility and connectivity, regional connections, safety, equity, and project feasibility. And each of these projects were weighted based on how they meet each of those goals. And then we also incorporated public, staff, and steering committee input and weighted those projects based on the support that we received from the community. And by doing this exercise, we have a full list of each of the projects and what's their priority rank. So for the priority projects, we have our top 10 projects that were ranked the highest in this process. And so what we've done is go into a little bit more detail of analysis for these priority projects to help set the stage for project development and implementation once the plans are adopted. So, you know, we go into a little bit more detail besides just kind of the basic planning network level of analysis so that you have the next steps that you need in order to develop these projects. And I do just want to say too, even though these are the top priority projects, if there are other opportunities which, and this is also specified in the text of the plan as well, you know, projects should be completed as opportunities arrives. So this provides kind of a framework of areas where the town should focus on based on community input and kind of all the things that I just mentioned. But if there are other opportunities to develop non-priority projects, we do recommend that you move forward with developing those non-priority projects, you know, as opportunities arise. So just to list the priority projects for you for the bicycle plane, plan, the first one is the Main Street Separated Bike Lanes, then East Young Street Side Path and Bike Lanes, Granite Falls Boulevard Separated Bike Lanes, Rogers Road Side Path and Bike Lanes, followed by Burlington Mills Side Path and Bike Lanes, then Redford Place Park Bike Lanes, Everett Road slash West Young Side Path and Bike Lanes, and then the bicycle boulevards within the Carlton Point Villages in Cedar Lakes Neighborhood, and then the bicycle boulevards within the Granite Falls area.
I'm sorry, you said Redford. Is that all of Redford?
So it is, no, good question. So that is, the bicycle lanes are from essentially the entrance to the villages to Main Street North. So the bicycle boulevard, I mean, the bike lanes really just follow that main kind of area outside of the residential neighborhood where you're getting into downtown. You're welcome. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these just for the sake of time, but I did want to provide the spreads for the priority project cut sheet so that you can see the level of analysis that we have here for each of those priority projects. I'll touch on a couple of them, though. So for the, so this, the first, the most popular project within this planning effort for the bike lane was the Bain Street Separated Bicycle Lanes. So separated bike lanes are essentially a bicycle lane with a two-foot buffer, and then you add flexible delineator posts that provide vertical and physical separation. And I know I went over that last time, but just to provide a little bit of context for you all. So this project would actually integrate very well into the proposed, into the proposed recommendations that are already being developed with the Main Street redesign. So this does not move any, it would not move, move any proposed travel lanes or require restriping. It would just require inclusion of the flexible delineator posts. And so to go over just very briefly just what the cut sheets speak to, so we provide a general project overview. We have an existing conditions snapshot. We also speak to each of the prioritization factors and how they ranked with the methodology. And then we just provided a snapshot that gives a little bit of a more detailed overview of the project on the left-hand side there, which includes, you know, proposed intersection treatments all along the corridor, implementation partners, and then we also have planning level cost estimates for each of these projects. And then we have a proposed typical section. And then we have design considerations. So we go into detail of what you need to look for when you're implementing this project. So what are the constraints? What are the design guidance that's provided from the federal and state level like FHWA and NCDOT? Those are the types of things that you need to consider when you're building out this project. So we go into detail there on that map. And then on the bottom right-hand side, you see the proposed rendering. So you can kind of see what the project would look like when it's completed. So we have a mix of aerial renderings, which this is one, and then photo simulations that actually like show what it looks like on the ground there. So this is just the overview for the Main Street Separated Bike Lanes. The next one is the East Young Side Path and Bike Lanes. So for these, and I also mentioned this, yes, last time as well, but just to kind of refresh, since the Community Transportation Plan, Roseville Moves, was just adopted in May 2021, we did feel like it was very important to integrate those proposed bicycle lane facility recommendations on those key corridors, so like Young Street, Everett, Burlington Mills, and Rogers Road, where the Community Moves Transportation Plan already provided bike lane recommendations there. But after getting additional input from the community, there has been a really strong desire to have more off-road connections and so along these corridors. So we included both side paths and bike lane recommendations. But we also stated here in the recommendations that, you know, if constraints arise and we cannot include both facilities, the preferred facility is a side path. And so this plan really speaks to the flexibility that you need as you're developing not only your community but your bike and pedestrian network as well. So we have built in these options and the flexibility so that when the time arises to build and construct these facilities, you can make choices based on the conditions at that time.
Just, just to make sure I follow kind of what you're saying on that particular slide right there. So a high school has put sidewalks, and I don't know, it's a long, long streak of sidewalks in there. So this plan recommends taking the sidewalks up and putting a side path in?
So, yeah, well, you can do two, one of like two things. So you can widen the sidewalk, you double the width of that, or you can pull it up and put asphalt down and put a 10-foot wide side path there. So it's, it's either, either option. I think it will also just depend on existing utilities, which that also speaks, we speak to that in the design considerations as well for these projects. But yes, for the, this was such an important project because people really did voice that safety concern of getting to the school, especially from north of Lewisburg Road. And, and so they really voiced a need for an off-road facility so that children, you know, and students feel safe biking and walking to school. And now I do want to touch specifically on the Granite Falls Boulevard Separated Bike Lanes. This was a very popular project, especially when we held the first survey for public input in Ju, in the summer of last year. So that was June and July. And so we got a lot of input on this corridor, especially as people were, you know, using the destinations along Granite Falls Boulevard, which includes the swim club. And so folks really did not feel comfortable biking on the existing bicycle lanes and preferred an off-road facility. And then also people voiced a need for having an off-road facility or a protected facility to Sanford Creek Elementary School as well. And so we proposed a separated bicycle lane here, which again, like Main Street, it provides that vertical separation by using flexible delineators and having that two-foot buffer between the travel lane and the bicycle lane. Now, we also got feedback from community members saying then that there was a need for parking along Granite Falls Boulevard specifically to access the swim club. And so we have provided, again, speaking of that flexibility, recommendations where if on-street parking is required along Granite Falls Boulevard, we do have an alternative recommendation along this corridor if separated bicycle lanes cannot be implemented at, you know, whenever this project would be moving forward. So we proposed a side street parking along one side of the road and then a buffered bicycle lane on the other side. And so that would essentially remove the bike lane on one side, and you would have to put shared lane markings on one side of the travel lane. And we think that that would be okay to, to utilize based on the proposed side path along Granite Falls Boulevard from Main Street Park to Burlington Mills. That does just leave that gap between Main Street and Young. So we do provide that flexibility here so that whenever, again, when this project is development, developed, you do have two options to choose from.
Is there a, I'm sorry, is there a visual of that option?
Um, it is in that, oh, no, I just included the photo there. No, we do not have an actual visual. We just provide the recommendation there.
So I'd like to talk about that one for a second. I was contacted from Granite Falls Swim Club. Since I'm on the steering committee and Parab and am a member of the club, even though obviously I don't work out. So instead of doing back and forth over the phone and everything else, I went and actually walked this. And the things I'm concerned about with the parking on the side would be if it was allowed, that we would go along, the curbs need to be marked for point of, point of sight coming out of that parking lot. And also for the fire hydrants, any crosshocks, we have everything else. That would all need to be marked out to make sure it's up to code, this and that. Right now, I think we just have fire hydrants marked, but nothing more than that. And you can't share parking and a bike lane. It just doesn't work. So an example of, that I just saw recently, we went down to First and Main for our Knightdale meeting. Right in front of their building, if you were looking at it really close, there was parking right in front of their building and their front doors. Directly beside that, the main drive lane, which is 25 miles per hour, which is the same as this, has that shared lane. There's, you just move the marking from the bike, the existing bike lane now, and move that, that marking out to that lane. So you'd be sharing that road with the bike. So they, they've actually used that in Knightdale that I saw as an example of something we've seen recently.
And JG did print out an image of what that looks like, so he's going to pass that around to y'all.
Thank you. I have the same
Thank you.
A concern with, my only concern is with the parking right at the curves. I think that that needs to be marked so that they cannot park there because it does obstruct the view. But other, otherwise, the buffered, what is it, buffered bicycle lane in one direction, I think that's a great idea, and it would solve a lot of issues and help with overcrowding on the streets, should there, should that not be an issue.
And I think that, I think the entrances is, I want to say 20 or 30 feet. You have to have no parking in that corner. So that's the biggest concern. I know that there's people that sit up there and you can't really see.
Yeah.
Either way, there's no way you could see to get out of there. And I don't want anybody, any accidents along or anything else, so.
I agree. You have to keep inching out to make sure you can see.
Yeah, and you should be able to see everything, so that's, so, yeah, I did walk that, just to see what it would look like. And that's, that's, this is basically what I was describing on this paper right here.
So, so the way that this is written, it's written with the one-way, with the alternate suggestion of the buffered bicycle lane in one direction.
Yeah.
If parking is needed in the future, which we know that it is.
And right now, we have an ordinance on the one side of Sanford Creek or Granite Falls Boulevard that we have no parking along there anyways. We have that in our ordinance. So we'd have to, we'd leave the bicycle lane on that, that side.
I'm sorry, so there's, biking is only in one direction?
Yeah, so.
Well, in, in terms of having a separated facility in one direction, so bicyclists would share the travel lane on, oh, I'm sorry. Bicyclists would share the travel lane, it's called a shared lane marking here, so they would get in the street to bike, and then you'd have the street parking here. And then this is the bicycle, the dedicated bicycle lane going in that direction.
So didn't somebody express concern about cars, doors opening and what have you?
Well, yeah, because right now, they're sharing that lane. So if you're trying to get, you can get, there's, I think, nine feet of space right there. So if you tried to squeeze a bike around a car and they still open their door into you, so now you, it would be a designated lane for bikes and cars.
Yeah, and what we have now on Granite Falls Boulevard is, yeah, not very safe for bicyclists. So making a change either way to either a separated bicycle lane or doing something like this to make sure that we reduce the conflicts between either, you know, cars parking or motorists coming in and out. So, and I think, I think this is definitely, you know, a challenging project here because we have received so much support for the separated bicycle lane. But we also want to speak to those concerns for folks who want parking. This happens in a lot of communities where you kind of have that challenge of trying to meet all those needs. And so we, we think that maintaining the, keeping the priority project as it is, speaking here with the cut sheet, but then providing that additional recommendation allow for that flexibility and, you know, the reality of the situation where we may not be able to provide that combination. But I think it still is really important that we do speak to that desire for so many community members who do want like dedicated facilities along Granite Falls Boulevard.
And ma'am, something like this actually does bridge the gap just inside that section. So thank you for this.
Yeah.
Is there a cost estimate for that? Would it be less than what your planning level cost estimate is here for the original bike lanes on both sides?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be kind of, it would be similar because they're both just restriping and then the cost of the flexible delineators. But both options are pretty low cost because you're essentially, you're not moving curb and gutter. You're essentially just restriping within the existing right-of-way.
Got you. So is that lane bigger on one side than the other?
Yes, it is.
In this proposal?
Yes.
This particular?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so where the parking that's, I guess, currently allowed, it's much wider.
I think it's nine feet on one side and seven on the other.
Yeah, and usually, so the standard is, you know, six feet bike lanes. And then if you do do a buffer, you do one and a half to two feet. Because anything larger than like seven, you will have that issue of people like parking in the bike lane. And I know that it's allowed here, but, you know, that's just the standard. But what, but what's good about having those existing wider lanes is that you have the, you have the travel lane width to be able to make those modifications with restriping.
Ma'am, are you proposing any type of signage?
Yeah, so all of, and that's actually specified in the design considerations as well. You would follow the standard MUTCD signage for, for these facilities. And there's also additional bicycle signage and guidance, which we provide in the Design Resources Appendix from NACTO. Resources Appendix from NACTO, which is the North American Transportation Officials Organization. So it provides additional guidance for bicycle and pedestrian facilities that go beyond what NACTO has provided at the federal level.
Catherine, can I, can I ask a question there?
Sure.
And then back to answering Commissioner Sutton's question about the cost, could an interim step be to resolve the conflict now? And that would be take out the bicycle path on the parking side and move those paint stripes into the driveline shared immediately or sometime soon and then sign appropriately? Is that a good interim step before completely restriping the street again?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think how, the, whatever the direction the town wants to take on that, I think that that's fine, especially because, again, we're just really restriping and we're not.
But the problem, here's a concern I have, and I'll just say, that, you know, we saw what happened when we restripped last time, it tore Granite Falls Boulevard and that's going to need an overlay sooner than later.
Right.
But not as.
It needs an overlay? I didn't hear.
Yeah, it will need an overlay soon, sooner than later. That would be expensive venture. I don't really want to go out and do a re-stripe and then do an overlay and then stripe that.
I agree.
So I would take, I would do the interim step, which would take the existing conditions off, of concern, and then when we re-asphalt, we would stripe it appropriately, is what I guess, what I would suggest.
The only thing I'd ask with that is maybe we, the curb and gutter is not going to change at all, so maybe we mark that now to make sure that the appropriate parking is done along that road as well.
We could, we could move on the interim step.
Right.
As soon as you adopt this and ready to try.
So what's the interim step? I didn't.
You would, you would take out the bicycle lane in the existing conflict lane now, essentially move that symbol out of here and move it out of here. So you do, you do the little re-striping.
Okay, so make, okay, gotcha.
And then sign, and then sign, and then do the appropriate signage.
Onto the main road.
And then, and then get rid of the, and then Paul's suggesting doing some painting of the curbs to eliminate the conflict.
Describe what you mean by resurfacing.
You, you, that road is going to need an asphalt overlay soon. It, the last time we did the restriping, you could see some of the asphalt came up, spots. So I don't know, I don't know what the index is, but it's pretty, it's up there, I think, for, so sometime probably next five years, you're probably putting a new layer of asphalt on Granite Falls Boulevard in that stretch.
Newer.
Does that make sense?
It does. It seems, it seems like it's not that old, though. So I'm not, and we'll take that, I mean, that's not an interim meeting.
I'll get the PCI on that, but I'll answer that.
I do, I do agree that whenever we do restriping, I know parking lots use this, this tar or something?
Cover them.
Cover?
Don't burn.
Yeah, but it looks better than just, you know, restriping, but.
And that's probably what we do here because it makes a lot more sense than burning, so.
Right. Yeah, burning looks bad.
Yep. Staticling.
Any other questions on this? All right, well, I'm just going to briefly show you all the other recommendation cut sheets for the bicycle plan so we can get to the greenway and be respectful of everyone's time here. But, yeah, so this is the Rogers Roadside Path and Bike Lane Cut Sheet here. I do want to mention really quickly, though, so for the bicycle plan, again, with it being NCDOT funded, NCDOT has a bicycle and pedestrian cost estimator tool, and so they like us to use that cost estimator tool to develop the planning level cost estimates for these projects. But the issue with using that tool is that it also incorporates roadway improvements. So some of these cost estimates are really high. And so that's not the accurate cost because it includes the roadway improvements. But I will also say, with NCDOT's recent Complete Streets Policy, which was adopted in 2019, any bicycle and pedestrian project that's along an NCDOT corridor that's in an adopted plan, NCDOT has to incorporate those multimodal elements into the roadway improvement project at no cost to the municipality. So any of these projects that are along the major NCDOT corridors here, like Rogers Road, NCDOT would fund the cost of these bicycle and pedestrian projects. That also includes side path as well, not just in on-street network. As long as it's in the roadway right-of-way, NCDOT has to make that accommodation. So we are providing cost estimates for reference, or especially if the town would want to pursue it prior to a roadway improvement project in coordination with DOT, but realistically, you know, for these major projects along NCDOT corridors, NCDOT would be funding these projects.
So any of these projects like this one here, Rogers Road, $11 million project?
Yeah, so that includes the roadway improvements.
Does it, does it require land acquisition?
So what we did with, yeah, and that's a good question. So what we did with these projects along these corridors that were in the Roseville Moves Plan is we used the typical sections from that planning effort in incorporating them here because we knew that the future typical sections of these roads all, it would be widened to multiple lanes than, you know, what they are now. And so that incorporates those proposals that were in the transportation plan, and that's why it's also such a high cost that you see there, because it includes those roadway improvements where you would need to, you know, acquire, DOT would acquire additional right-of-way and, and move curb and gutter.
So it is, it is acquisition in, in that estimates, I guess.
So it, DOT says that it's not, but, you know, when we are looking at our estimates that we can develop in-house, it would include the right-of-way. But we do have to add that disclaimer because that's what's on the DOT Cost Estimator Tool. Because you are putting in, you know, they're asking you, yeah, it's a tool and you, you provide a checklist of things and so it incorporates those costs. So, yeah, so even though technically it doesn't, it's, the tool says that it does not, based on these costs, it does.
So what number was this one?
This is number four.
Because I know that we've talked about this a lot, because we don't have a connection from Granite Falls Boulevard to Domino's Pizza. Like that's the, you know, there's nothing left out to go down that way, so.
Yeah, this was a very popular project amongst the public and you can even see, you know, that tow path there on the existing conditions facility. And I was so glad when I was right there that they had a bicyclist biking there and I was able to get that shot. But, yeah, you can definitely see folks walking and biking along the corridor there, so it definitely is needed. And then, so same thing for Burlington Mills, the rendering shows the connection in front of the middle school. This, these are the bike lanes along Redford Place Drive. This is the Everett Road West Young Side Path and Bike Lanes. You can see the rendering that we've done at the bottom, so you can see the side paths and the bicycle lanes. And then this is the, the Roseville Road Bicycle Lanes. And then these are the Bicycle Boulevards. So you can see from that facility rendering, you can see those are the shared lane markings. So that's like, that marking there is also what you would put on the one lane of Granite Falls Boulevard. And then this is the last one, the Granite Falls Neighborhood Bicycle Boulevard as well. And we provided guidance from FHWA for, for that one.
Yeah, so, so this Virginia Water Drive, I don't, I'm not sure I know what a boulevard is.
So, yeah, it's, so essentially it's, it's called a bicycle boulevard because it provides a corridor for bicyclists where they know that they will feel relatively safe biking on road because it has signage and it has pavement markings within the shared travel lane with the vehicle that both alerts the bicyclists and motorists, you know, that there's going to be multi modes present here in this corridor. So that's kind of the technical term bicycle boulevard, but really it is just using those shared lane markings and signage.
It's all shared.
Yep, yep. So programs and policies, this is just a snapshot of the proposed policies. We have not changed any of the proposed policy recommendations from last time. The one thing that we did add when I gave my presentation last time was inclusion of signal detection for bicyclists at signalized intersection where there isn't any. So that's the only additional policy recommendation that we made from the last time we gave a presentation. And the description provides guidance and an overview of each of those proposed policy recommendations. And then the last chapter of the bike plan, of course, focuses on implementation. So it goes over each of the key roles in implementation for developing, you know, projects within this plan. And so you have the role of each of the kind of key players here. So, you know, of course, the town board, town departments, NCDOT, regional and county stakeholders, you know, the Open Space and Greenway Committee, or if the town would like to develop its own bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee that speaks specifically to, you know, on-street or bicycle pedestrian issues in addition to greenways, which is what we have now with the Open Space and Greenways Committee. And then also it provides an overview of how local residents and community groups can get involved with implementation and then the role of developers as well. And so that overview kind of provides, it, it provides kind of, yeah, an overview of each of these roles that will then go into the action plan here. So this is a table that provides each of the action steps or the key action steps that will help with implementing this planning efforts. So it goes over the specific actions, such as like plan adoption, and then it provides a description of that action, which agency, so, and then which, you know, department within the town of Roseville would be the lead agency on that particular action, and then which agencies or departments would support that action, and then what's the rough timeline for implementation? So this is kind of the final piece in the plan that really outlines, okay, we have a plan, how do we move it forward? And these are kind of the key steps that kind of gets you from, you know, planning stage to project development stage. And, you know, key things are continuing to coordinate with NCDOT, especially on some of those roadway projects that I had mentioned. You know, DOT has been a very engaged and supportive agency throughout this entire planning process since this was a grant-funded project and we've met with them multiple times throughout the project and they fully support, and they're reviewing the plan right now, and they fully support this planning effort. And so that's been great to have them coordinate with us and we definitely recommend, and it's in the action plan here, that the town of Roseville continue to coordinate closely with DOT. Now moving on to the bike plan, so again, starting at recommendations, and I'm going to go through this a little bit quicker because I know we're a little short on time, but for the greenway plan, we wanted to provide specific design standards and typical sections for greenway elements. And so we provide guidance on material selection, so whether it's paved or natural surface greenways or side paths. And then we also provide guidance on other elements within a greenway network like boardwalk sections, tunnels, bridges, and we provide typical sections and inf- design guidance for each of those types of facilities. And for the sake of this planning effort, the preferred typical section for the greenways and side paths within these plan recommendations is a 10-foot wide paved asphalt trail. We also have a constrained segment as well. So these are for like neighborhood connectors or again, areas where you may not be able to accommodate a full 10-foot wide path. The constrained segment is eight foot wide and it can be paved or unpaved. So we have, you know, asphalt sections of, of those constrained segments or you can do natural surface. And then this just shows you typical sections for boardwalk and guidance. We also included all the different typical sections for side paths are in this planning effort based on the roadway width, and so that's shown here. And then we also incorporated intersection treatments and crossing guidance as well. It's so important for greenway plans, you have a lot of mid-block crossings, and so we provided information on the different types of intersection treatments within the greenway plan. And then this shows grade-separated crossings, so bridges or tunnels. And, you know, in the case of Roseville, we already have those set tunnels under 401, so thankfully the town will not have to build any tunnels, but we still want to provide guidance just in case there are other future needs for tunnels. I don't think there are lights currently. And we do provide guidance on lighting as well.
There are lights in the tunnel. We'd have to install them.
Yeah, because I did walk a few in some of my site visits and I did not notice.
And none of them are in use, so they would have to be installed.
But they are, you know, currently paved, you know, and so that's great. So all you have to do is provide those connections on either end of the tunnel.
Didn't, I didn't see any, you see, you mentioned bridges. I didn't see a roadway crossing bridge in here.
Yeah, so we did look at, so most of these bridges are for, you know, wetland sections where you may, or, you know, stream crossings, things like that, smaller section bridges. We did look at opportunities for grade-separated crossings, like for example, you know, at Young and Lewisburg Road, but due to some of the constraints along that corridor with topography and some environmental challenges, and then also the ADA requirements for the percentage of slope that you need to maintain to meet those ADA requirements, bridges in some sections that we looked at would be really costly because of the approach that you need to be able to meet some of those design requirements. So we did look at it, but in terms of specific, you know, grade-separated crossings with bridges, we do not have any, you know, in the plan. But also, I'll just say as a caveat to that, you know, when you get to the design stage, sometimes alignments may shift and you may need a bridge where we originally thought you didn't, due to some things that may have been unearthed in the design or feasibility study phase.
I do know our Greenway Committee has a bridge or two that they want to see in plans. Who makes the decision not to put it in the plan?
So what, so what we do is we work our plan and, planners and engineers side by side. And so as a planners, you know, we're thinking big, oh, we need to make this connection at no matter what cost. And then kind of our engineers bring us down to earth and tell us what it'll cost and tell us what you need for the design. And so we do work hand in hand so that we make sure that our recommendations are really feasible and kind of based in reality, given, you know, funding constraints.
So you guys make that recommendation?
Yes, yep.
You, you decide what goes in the plan and what doesn't go in the plan, is that right?
Yeah, but it, it is also heavily impacted by public and town input. But, yeah, in terms of like specific recommendations, you know, we use just our expertise to make the best judgment calls of what would be, you know, feasible for these particular corridors. So this is the greenway network and on the side of it, it's all the proposed recommendations with the intersection treatments. In terms of network refinement, since the last time that we were together in February, there's only been a couple minor ones, so we kind of tweaked the Harris Creek Corridor a little bit just based on input from the Open Space and Greenway Committee members. We also provided the connection between Tom's Creek and Sanford Creek Greenway, so that corridor here. And then we also shifted Tom's Creek to the north of the creek rather than the south. And then also, like I had mentioned previously, when I was talking about the bike plan, we added a side path along Granite Falls Boulevard from Rogers Road to Burlington Mills Road. And those are the main, yeah, those are the only other changes that we made following our meeting in February.
Is Harris Creek in Roseville or is that Raleigh?
So it's actually in Roseville, Wake County and Raleigh. It's a huge corridor and it's like one of the key regional greenway corridors within the Wake County Greenway Plan.
So Roseville pays for all of it?
So for some of, so for the greenway plans, I mean, for, yeah, so for the greenway projects, obviously we don't have DOT for those off-road connections except for. projects, obviously, we don't have DOT for those off-road connections except for side paths. But, you know, Wake County does have funding through their bond, their 2018 bond, and they do still have funds to provide to municipalities within Wake County to build greenway sections. And then we also provide funding resources at the end of the plan that outlines different grant opportunities that you can apply for, and most of those require about a 20% match.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you put it, if you, if you put it in the plan, we can get developers to do it, no cost us. And, you know, that's, I think that's what our open space is kind of working hard to get things in the plan, so when developers come in, they put the greenways in, it doesn't cost us anything. The problem is we're not getting them into plan, so they refuse to put them in.
So this is going to be in the plan?
Yeah, so from now on, and based on the language of the current LDU, you know, after it was revised in June of last year, it does require developers to build greenway segments that are in the adopted plan. And so once this plan is adopted, you know, moving forward, developers have to build those sections. And you can see, we do have some of those already that are going in as a part of new development. So the darker green dash lines, those are the developer-built greenways that are either, will be in development soon as a part of a, you know, development, or it's currently under construction right now. So like, for example, you know, with the point development, that'll be our first key piece across Lewisburg Road, and it'll connect that tunnel there. So I'm just going to briefly go over the priority projects.
One quick question.
Oh, yep.
I think Commissioner Maddy brought it up about the tunnel. Do you have any tunnel designs in here with the lights? And I saw, I saw a design that had painting on it, you know, like an art design on the outside. I thought that may be pretty neat, but overall standard that we need to do to these tunnels?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll go jump ahead real quick so you can see. So in our policies recommendations, we provide additional guidance on the trail amenities. So we provide design guidance for lighting, so you can see on this page, it specifically speaks to lighting and how to place lighting within tunnels and along the greenway corridors and other elements where, other areas where a lighting element may be necessary. You know, we provide additional guidance on wayfinding. You know, we know the town already has a wayfinding system, and a lot of these signage has just been installed. But we also provide just additional guidance if there's any, you know, improvements that the town would like to make, you know, to the wayfinding guidance. We provide, yeah, guidance on trail branding, design guidance for trailheads, and then also how to collect data along trails. So we do go into all the different kind of considerations for that in the plan. And to briefly just snapshot some of these priority projects, so, so in addition to the 10 priority projects for the greenway plan and the bike plan each, we were also scoped to do feasibility, like feasibility analyses for the top three priority projects within the town. And those are the, you know, connection between Heritage East Greenway and Millbridge Park slash Sanford Creek Greenway along Rogers Road, you know, filling in that critical missing link to fully connect those greenways. And then we also looked at the loop along, you know, for the loop that's proposed, we looked at the segment along Granite Falls Boulevard for a side path there to make the connection between Main Street Park and Burlington Mills. And then we also looked at a segment of the Harris Creek Greenway that will, needs to be town-built, which is, and so that's the connection over or under Virginia Water's Drive. So for these, we went into much more detail. We had our engineering team model these segments in CAD, and we looked at all the different alignments. And then we provide cost estimates for each of the alignments, and then we have a recommended alignment for each of these three projects. So, and this just shows you, this is the, you know, Heritage East to Millbridge Park Greenway Connector along Rogers Road and Heritage Gates Drive. So we looked at all those different alignments there, and so we studied those, and then we picked a preferred alternative based on the constraints along each of these options. So the proposed segment is to have a side path along Heritage Gates Drive, and then a side path along on the left side of Rogers Road to make that connection. For this project, we also met with NC DOT Division 5 to talk about that existing crossings and ways that we can improve that crossing so that it's safer, and, you know, you don't have to take your life in your hand when you're trying to make that crossing. So we did be able to provide intersection treatment recommendations for that section after meeting with DOT. And we looked at several, we looked at three potential crossings along Rogers Road, and it really made the most sense to utilize the existing crosswalk, but to, you know, include a rapid flashing beacon there, rather than just have a striped crosswalk, which is what is now. And then this is just kind of the snapshot of kind of the more detailed specifics of that. And then for the Harris Creek Greenway segment, we also looked at both sides of the creek. We looked at going over Rogers, Virginia Water Drive, and then also under. After our analysis, we felt that it was best to utilize the existing culvert under Virginia Water Drive and to go under the roadway rather than above, just due to some of the topography constraints. It's so steep in that area. So we, you know, we walked that whole corridor and looked at all the different options. And so the most cost-effective and also the kind of best option for my user experience as well would be to stay on the left-hand side of the creek. And also the point that I had mentioned earlier, that developer-built section that will be in soon, that will tie into that developer-built greenway, or will be a developer-built greenway perfectly by staying on that left-hand side, utilizing the existing culvert. And you also don't have to build as many stream crossings, you know, with bridges, which become very costly. And this is, you can see the existing conditions there, utilizing the existing culvert. It is wide enough to be able to do so. And then lastly, so for the side path section, we looked at both sides of the roadway. We also looked at potentially creating a greenway through that vacant parcel on the corner of Granite Falls Boulevard and Rogers Road and connect to Main Street Park that way. There are some topography constraints there in the stream crossing that, while that could be feasible, we do recommend maintaining the side path along the southern side of Granite Falls Boulevard there. That's the most cost-effective and like feasible option here. And then we stay on the south side of Granite Falls Boulevard here until we get to Grand Rock Way. We also proposed, you know, curving and kind of meandering the greenway around the existing fire hydrant so that you don't actually have to move utilities there. There is enough width to do that, and it also eliminates having to go on the northern side where there's street lighting, which would have to be moved in order to provide that side path there. And then this just continues, this is the extension, and we do move, we do switch over to the northern side for this extension part. And then this is kind of providing more details as well. And then, you know, this is just some of the other projects that were priority projects for the greenway plan, so the Main Street Side Path, the, we're just calling it kind of Heritage East Chalk Road Connect, Greenway Connector. This provides a connection to Heritage East through the neighborhoods and then to Chalk Road there. So this was a very popular project, especially for folks who are living in, you know, Preserve Jones Dairy, and then north of that to provide that connection to Heritage East. And then this is the Redford Place Park, Young Street Greenway Connector. This was also a very popular project, getting into downtown through this greenway corridor here was one of the highest-ranked projects when we've sent out the survey. And then the Redford Place Park Greenway as well was also a highly ranked project as well. So that's the priority projects. We already just briefly kind of touched on the trail amenity guidance as well, so I'll just flip through that. And then again, similar to the bike plan, we have the action plan table that provides specific actions for implementation, and then the lead and supporting agencies who would support project development for, for those particular pieces. We also provide specific details on maintenance and maintenance needs, tasks that, you know, should be completed on a routine basis versus major repairs, major reconstruction, timeframes for those, and, you know, whether or not things are contracted out or done in-house. And then lastly, we just, we end the plan with kind of an overview of the key steps to project development following an adopted plan. Oh, well, I have one more slide. It doesn't look like it was going, but it was just next steps, which I can tell you. So the next steps will be to finish the, editing the plan, just with those few minor tweaks that we received from staff and town comments. And we hope to finish those by the end of this week. We're still waiting for NC DOT comments for the bike plan, but I've been reassured that those are very minor and that they will give us that as soon as possible. And so once we have those, we will have the final plans complete, and then, you know, the town can move forward with adoption. And JG mentioned that adoption will likely take place in the August meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Any final thoughts from you?
You know, I do have a question. How long? I'm so sorry. How long from beginning to end? How many years are we talking here?
Fifty to a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we usually do like, you know, we say 15-year planning horizons, but in reality, just with the limited funding that we have in North Carolina for trails, that is changing, thankfully, and I think we are going to start to see a tide shift and have more priorities. So that means we have more funding and we can implement these projects sooner. But really, you know, you could potentially be looking at build-out at like a 30-year scenario. It just depends on how you're able to prioritize projects. And again, work with those developers and DOT to be able to leverage those outside funds.
And then we have an idea of which one we want to tackle first.
Yeah, and those were the priority projects that we went over.
Okay, I didn't know if that was, I'm not even sure. It was just a lot.
The majority of our greenway system is developer-built. What we're really doing is connecting missing links. Where it's early 2000s, where we didn't require developers to develop greenways, we're going back and installing those greenways now. That's the Cedar Lakes Crossing of Virginia Water. That's them having just put an easement in the towns when they have to construct. We have similar ones in Granite Falls that are similar to that. That'll be coming up in the future as well, where we have to come back and just connect those missing pieces from this early 2000s where greenways weren't, wouldn't put in place to be built by the developers as we do now. And we've learned and evolved over time that it's easier to put these greenways in with infrastructure as developments come in. So that's what we're really doing. And we are very fortunate in Roseville to have majority of our greenways developed by the developers are installed, and we're, again, just connecting missing pieces is the majority of what we're doing. And that's why we asked Catherine and McAdams Group to give us the feasibility, and Mayor, to your point of one of the bridges, I believe McAdams looked at flying over Rogers Road for that connection from Heritage East to Millbridge, and it just wasn't cost-effective or the, in the ADA acceptable with the amount of land that would be needed to make those crossings.
Thank you.
So 50 years?
Thirty to fifty years.
Thank you. Appreciate it, JG. Good job.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, next item, number five, and we'll try to get this one in. Review of Community Center of Cobblestone Facility focusing on proposed design and other alternative designs as it relates to programming. Looks like it's Kelly Arnold and JG Ferguson.
So this is on your agenda based upon further input from the board of interest to talking about the current design, and then also if there's a desire to modify that design that is on, started its preliminary programming and design. And it's a good time to have this conversation because if we're going to make a modification or interested in modification, then we don't want to go much further on the existing community center that we've been designing right now. Just to summarize that facility, it's being proposed as a facility with a gym, 18,000 square feet approximately, I believe, thereabouts. Seven and a half million dollar is the cost of that. And I included a memo that I wrote back in April 25th about this project and summarized the difference between the two, tried to take the work of the consultants when they met with you. And JG has further refined that work a little bit more tonight, if you are interested, on how that building could be programmed, and I want to say could be. It's obviously not built or anything, but it's an idea. But really, it's up to you, and I think Commissioner Sutton would like to probably talk to you a little bit further about whether this is the right facility, the right size, and what you would like to see in the community center at Cobblestone. So Mayor, maybe Commissioner Sutton, would you like to lead?
I'm just letting the mayor run his meeting, so I don't want to mess up nothing.
Yeah, I'm, either JG, or if you had some comments you want to start with, Sheila?
I'd like to hear from JG first.
I would, I would like, yeah, I would like to see.
What refinement?
Yeah, what the, I think, I think we should see what is proposed, the usage would be, and how would you propose using it?
So Mayor, Board of Commissioners, thank you again for the time this evening to talk about the Roseville Community Center at Cobblestone. Also have handouts of the presentations. Some of the texts may get small, so I want to make sure you have that in front of you.
Thank you.
Give me these parcels around. I got it, Cole. I got it.
Thank God, I don't want him to come knock my knee.
Yeah, I know, I know it's been beneficial, JG, for me just looking over, you know, I forget, I didn't, I had forgot, we planned to have a commercial kitchen in there, right? Is that?
Originally, as we're going through the planning stages with our consultants, the cost of where that is, we're looking more of a warming kitchen for the catering. Yes, sir.
Yeah, kind of bring us the speed of what, where are we at today with it?
Yes, sir.
What are you planning to use it for?
Yes, sir. So currently where we're at, if you turn to the, I guess, flip the first page of the handout, is this what's on the slide in front of you, is this is the two-floor community center, which as Mr. Arnold alluded to, is roughly around 17, 18,000 square feet. It would accommodate 240 people sitting for an event. It would also accommodate a high school regulation gym for activity programming as well. This also gives us square footage for programming upstairs, as well as more of a dance and fitness room upstairs. And downstairs, you would have another classroom that would be more of your arts, luncheon learns, that type setting, multipurpose room. And upstairs would have offices for parks and recreation staff. You're looking at currently four hard-walled. You're looking at currently four hard-wall offices and then about three to four cubicle style offices around the perimeter of the room as well. So that's the current building that the town has been working with, based upon the town board with our consultant moving forward with CP and L. The reduced alternative that was presented as Kelly, as Mr. Arnold also presented, was a twelve-thousand-square-foot facility. This would eliminate two of the multipurpose rooms, leaving staff offices downstairs where the multipurpose room would be. And we would have a large multipurpose room without a gymnasium in it. It would be just a multipurpose room banquet-style facility. On the left, the consultants do show it divisible into three. After consulting with staff and talking, we really wouldn't program those three spaces all at the same time because of the noise barrier. You could possibly do, you know, an art class, a drawing class. You wouldn't be able to do a fitness class and an art class just because of the barriers of the sound, as we know with our existing facility next door. Unless those are hard walls. And again, if we want to accommodate two-hundred-and-forty people, we couldn't make those hard-wall These are some images that was presented to the town board, also by CP and L, some of their presentations of what some of these multipurpose rooms, classroom, fitness rooms could look like. So again, these are just renderings, just to refresh your memory on what some of those images were that they showed. This is the flexible event space. Again, some imagery where you're showing the event space and where it could be set up in several different ways, whether it's used for athletic programming, for multi-use programming, concerts, theaters, graduations, or larger banquet styles as well. So there are different ways to decorate the facility as well. So again, these are just some more event space flexibility imagery that you've seen before.
JG, we're talking about a multi-use floor as well in here, right?
Correct, yes, sir. It would not be a hardwood floor. It would be a rubberized, durable surface. So I kind of tasked staff over the last three or four days to really, how would we, conceptually, how would we come up with a mock schedule? How do we program this facility to the max of its ability? So if you kind of see in green, that's kind of that programming that we're providing to our citizens, and the bluish color is more of that, what's that rentability? On the left side is your Monday through Friday, your weekday scheduling. The right side would be your weekend scheduling of Saturday and Sundays. Again, these are just mock schedules of what some of the ideas, what we would have. And it ranges from all ages, from senior programming to toddler program to even the teen programming that we know we're missing that opportunity, but we're looking at programming that once we have the space and the facility to do that as well. So the first mock schedule you're seeing is for the two-story facility because we do have three programmable spaces, so we want to make sure we included how we would program those three spaces. Again, this is just a mock schedule. This is what we would want to do. We want to maximize our facility and make sure we're providing the quality programs to our citizens.
You keep saying, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You keep saying two floors.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it truly two full floors?
Yes, ma'am.
I was told it was not.
Well, you're going to have an open area above your event center. That area will be open, but the perimeter, two sides of it...
Full floors. It's like a two-story foyer, but there's no floor to walk on on the second floor.
You're going to have about forty-three, forty-four hundred square feet on the second floor, and you're looking at about twelve-thousand square feet on the first floor. So you're not going to have two full floors.
Not two full floors.
No, ma'am.
The drawing makes it look like it's two full floors, but it's not. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, that's on me is I asked the architects to draw showing the event center and the court so you could see the two different layouts of the facility.
But the part where you can walk on upstairs is going to be this.
That will be, yes, ma'am.
Correct, not this floor. This is not an upstairs gym.
Correct. Or the event center looking down, either way. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that is a little confusing, I think.
It looks like it's two different floors.
Yeah, because really you can have, you can set up either way, but no, it's not.
So basically, you're looking into, looking down.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a quick question for you. So you're saying, I know you said it's a mock schedule, but just trying to get the idea of events, athletics, what have you. Do you really have senior programs that start at six o'clock in the morning?
That would be more of your walking program. You have a lot of your seniors want to come out and walks. You would open the gym or the multi-use facility and they'd walk their perimeter. You know, it's not ideal length, but it's something that gets them out and gets them moving because there's no other indoor facility currently where they can go out and get some exercise in the mornings.
I can see that in the morning times.
Think about your mall walkers.
Mm-hmm.
So again, this is just a mock. We want to maximize this. This is just kind of looking at what do we do today and what can we do if we actually had our own standalone facility. So that's the first page. The second page, and I apologize, this is broken down in quarters. So the first page is January through March and April through June, depending on what kind of programming we do in those times of the seasons. And then July through September, October through December is page two of the two-story And then moving along, you see on the next page will be the one-story community center, and that is kind of how we would program that space. Again, on the left is your weekdays, Monday through Friday, and on the right would be your weekend availability. Again, we're just trying to find that happy medium of providing programming to our citizens out of this space while still making sure we have rentable space on the weekends in both concepts. In the same setup, on the first page is March, January through March, April through June, then July through September, October through December on page two. As you can see, you're kind of building a summer camp program, and those kind of lines with our quarters of where we do those. And it's the possibility of also doing trackout camps as well in either facility, which would really tie up your facility, you know, seven A to six P, Monday through Friday. So the single story, you only have that one facility, so it's kind of going to dominate your programming during the week versus the multi, when you have multiple programming spaces.
So I have just a couple more questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we settled on the two... I don't even want to call it two-story because it's very deceptive. It's not truly a two-story. I don't know what you call that.
Larger facility?
Whatever. I don't know what you call that, but it's not a two-story.
It's a larger square footage?
Yeah, the larger one, yeah. But how do you coordinate this programming if you have basketball?
Just as it is in front of you. We would have youth programming in the winter. Those evening hours would most likely be during Monday through Friday. And Saturday mornings would be that, probably that youth programming, but most likely be like a basketball. And then the weekends, we would leave open mainly for those rental availabilities. That's usually when your higher rentals are on weekends, and we would try to leave those open for those rentability.
So you're saying this is a mock, this is not a promise, and this is not a contract, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying on the weekends, you would leave it open for rental space only, not basketball?
Yes, ma'am. That would be our...
Or any other sports. Let me clarify.
Anything, pickleball, volleyball. Our goal would be, as we do this facility, we kind of don't program weekends because we know that's a rentability time. So we try to leave it available for that, and we would program that with the same concept as well.
So I just need to see an example in the community where this is working, because I haven't been able to find it, and I've been searching. So that's the challenge I have. I understand what you're saying. On paper, it looks good, but I haven't been able to find that. Even from what the consultants gave us, I've called facilities, I've visited facilities. That's not how they use their space. If they have a gym, it's a gym. I think one of the examples given by the consultants was Alexander YMCA downtown or Hillsborough Street. And I called them and they were like, we don't rent any of our space. Everything is dedicated to our members. So I haven't found one. That's one example. I probably have five. I haven't found one where they're doing that. The only one I went to today that was hopeful was Joyner Park in Wake Forest. Much larger facility. It sounds more like our farm project because it's like a hundred and seventeen acres. I think it's right around the same thing we have, and they're building it out over time. They have one gym floor, which they use only for the gym. They do not rent it out. They have one multipurpose space that can hold up to fifty people seated, and that's it. So I haven't found in any community where they're doing this shared space. So I like it in theory. I just don't see it anywhere in practice.
We practice it right now next door, not with athletics, but with programming.
Right, you don't have athletics. That's what I'm saying, with athletics.
And we control the athletics, so we can control our schedule.
I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying, if you build a floor for athletics, I just haven't seen that in use. And what I'm saying is, when I asked Kelly, for examples, to get examples from the consultant, not only where they're positioned around commercial or retail spaces, but also where is this shared practice successful? Where is it being used? I have found one other one in Wake Forest. I think it's called Community House, where they actually do just events. So I just don't, I don't see it. I see what you're saying in theory, I just don't see it in practice.
Yeah, I know Meven has a facility similar. I don't know exactly how it's set up, but I know they do events as well as athletics out of their facility as well. I can reach out to them. Again, we don't do everything that everyone else does either. We control our own destiny in our own facilities. If we want to say, we don't want any athletics or any kind of events programming beyond noon on Saturdays, we want to make that available for rentability, we can set that as a policy, and that's how we can program our space.
I just want to make sure we program, we build the space to accommodate what we're saying we were going to have. Because if you don't have it where, one of the things, and this is getting into the design, but I just wanted to mention this because I saw it, having an indoor walkable track is huge and it's a big, it's a big draw for your community. When you talk about recreation and activating seniors and anybody who wants to walk, especially in the winter, but things like that, where I'm looking at seven, we're looking at seven and a half, I keep saying eight million. I'm going to just say eight million, be eight million probably by the time we do it. Eight million dollars, and if you don't have those components, are you really addressing the needs that you have?
We're addressing a need that we don't have currently. We don't have any indoor programmable space beyond this twenty-three-hundred square feet. Our benchmarking from our comprehensive master plan calls by 2029 having thirty-nine-thousand square feet. And if you look at our current CIP, there's no room in the budget for any facility of that size currently. So is something better than nothing? In my opinion, I believe it is, is we don't have any of those, that ability to serve the citizens of Roswell. We get calls from folks that would like to have just an open gym, just to come in and get some exercise in the middle during the lunch day, or some adults who want to have adult leagues. We don't have any facilities to program for adults. We don't have any facilities to program for teens. High school kids and middle school kids, seventh, eighth graders, aren't going to come to our community center next door. We have nothing available. We don't have the space to store. So we do need a facility to program for those residents.
I think, I think just, I think you see churches do it a lot. I know, I know Roswell Baptists, they're going to have the expo, expo being on the church, and they put a floor in that will, you got to put a floor in that serves them off the purpose. I know, I know the big church down...
I don't know what you're talking about. I can't think of the name. Richling Creek.
Can't think of the name of it now. Richling Creek. Now, they got a new sanctuary, but for years before they had the sanctuary, they had their meeting on that big, you know, I think it had two gym floor sizes in it. And, you know, and they converted into, I think you see it a lot in churches, but I don't know if you, you know, I think, I think you're right. I think a lot of youth programs will build a basketball gym, and that's all they use it for.
That's what I...
And I think, I think what Commissioner Sutton is saying and what I would say, you know, we want to be able to use it for all kinds of stuff, even, I would love, I would love to have a place where the chamber could have their event in town, you know?
Right, and that's what our vision as a recreation staff is as well. And I talked to my staff and their vision, that's their vision as well, is to have, we don't program just athletics. We're really expanding our footprint into programming and special events. So we're going to use this facility to the maximum benefit of the community. Not all the community plays sports, but all the community, everyone has a different aspect that they want to enjoy, and we want to make sure we program to affect everyone in our community. So we're not just a, we don't have our blinders on and just looking at just a gym and an athletics court. We're looking at as a multipurpose facility that will facilitate programming for everyone in our community.
Think of the, so if I, if I may, just to help, what I'm hearing you interest is, are there examples?
Yeah, I haven't found one yet.
What's that?
I just said I haven't found one.
Right, I'm going to raise, I'm saying paraphrasing. Are there examples? And if so, also a good question would be, how are you programming and what's your recovery cost?
Exactly.
Right? So, because Commissioner Olson had this conversation about facilities, and they're not, they're not moneymakers. You try to attain some cost recoveries, you're not subsizing all the time. JG, I think an exercise we should do is, to the best of our ability, find a similar facility and find a similar programming, and then ask that question. Tell us how it's working and how is your cost recovery working in programming costs? And see if there is an example, hopefully more than one, or two, or three, that you can then say, this is similar or not, and then you can make a decision whether you like it or not. But you're having a hard time visualizing this based upon, we haven't shown you anything that says this is what facility X is like.
What if you can't find one?
Well, then you got, you got to decide.
Then you'd basically be a trailblazer for this type of project.
Well, again...
Because I don't think one project over the other is going to cut it. I do think a combination of the two...
And I'll just tell you, my experience before, when I came to a previous community, we had one, we had a community center, very similar layout, one gym. We didn't, we had a wood floor. We had to buy the cover. But that, we did program that gym for events. We had the Christmas bazaar there. We had the chamber banquet there. AV was miserable. We didn't do the AV well when they built it. And then when we, when we added to it, added aquatics and a second gym, we were able to expand, and we got smarter on the second gym, moved it and made it more durable and usable for events. But Windsor, Colorado did exactly what we're talking about with one gym. And they had different events in there. So we can, we can find out their experience and then I can find others too.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing we got to be careful of, JG, is, you know, as the program, you got, this is a good sheet here, as the programs increase, we got to make sure our programs doesn't consume the whole time.
That's what concerns me.
In other words, we got to, we're going to have to, you know, set up some times that we're going to have it set for events. And, you know, we want, you know, we want the annual chamber, we want annual events in there too, you know? Those type things. We just got to make sure, because I could see, I could see programs, you know, because it's next door. I mean, you just said, you know, you keep that place programmed packed.
And that's our goal, is to, to serve the community, and the need is meeting space, and it's also to provide programs. We don't want to build this center and it sit empty all day. We want to make sure that people are coming through the doors and activating. And it's also activating the businesses down there as well, because we're going to be that anchor. Our goal is to be the anchor for that whole development of commercial use, for people to come in, use our facilities, either drop off their children and go get a cup of coffee, or they're going to go to a program or an event and then leave it and go out and have a, have a cup of coffee as a nightcap. So that's kind of our goal as well, to be the anchor for the commercial downtown. And I believe that's what Cobblestone envisions us to be as well.
I would agree with that. I just have a few more questions on cost, though, because I didn't get to finish what I was asking.
Yes, ma'am.
I had several more questions. And it's on the cost. First of all, the needs of the community. When we designated the community center previously, I was on that subcommittee years ago. I don't even know how long ago that was. It was a while ago, but we talked about having four gyms and this big imagination of having this large facility that we use for tournaments and so on and so forth. That's what I've been running into, a lot of those types of facilities when I do go. So I'm trying to figure out how much of that need does this meet? What percentage does that meet? And then secondly, what is the revenue and expenditures for Parks and Rec? Do you bring in a profit as far as Parks and Rec?
So as Parks and Recreation is a public service, just like public safety, water, sewer, solid waste. We're a service, we're a benefit for quality of life for our citizens. So we're not an enterprise to generate revenue, but we do charge fees to offset those. Coming before you, hopefully in the next fall, there's a draft that staff has been working on, is a cost recovery policy that we'd like to get before you that helps us set our fees. So we've got a draft, we're almost done, we're tweaking it, so we make sure we're going to go through the advisory board and then the town board for that. Right now athletically, we're probably... Right now athletically, we're probably 80 to 100% cost recovery of direct cost. That's where we're at right now with our current participation numbers.
What does that mean? Break it down in layperson's terms. If you were talking to a six-year-old, that's how I'm gonna treat myself right now.
Yes, ma'am. So direct costs or anything, I use youth athletics as an example, because that's our biggest, that's one of their biggest draw for financials. Well, direct costs are the uniforms, the baseballs, soccer balls, officials, part-time staff. So when it comes to everything that's directly related to that activity, we're at or near 100% cost recovery. Now, that doesn't cover our full-time staff or the facility itself, but for that program, we're covering the cost of that program to be.
You're almost breaking even.
Yes, ma'am.
When it comes to that. I just wanted to clarify that for education.
To kind of give you an idea, we're not done yet, but we're almost at $200,000 in revenues for Parks and Recreation Department coming out of COVID, which is, for a town of 10,000 people, that's really impressive. That's between rentals and programming, sponsorships, things like that. So our total revenues are close to 200,000 a year.
So rentals help us?
Yes, ma'am. That's the shelter rentals. We really haven't held a lot of rentals, yes, ma'am.
Correct. And I wanted to stress that because Parks and Rec is a service, just like police and fire. So I don't expect you all to make a revenue, I really don't. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody who might be listening. So my other question is back to the needs. We talked about the larger gym, four, four gym floors, I think we talked about, being able to do pickleball, we toured Clayton and other gyms. And I do foresee us having that one day, but I foresee us that being a bond, or somebody being really generous and donating a hundred million dollars, hasn't happened yet. So it's gonna have to be a bond at some point in order to meet that need. And I just don't want us to short side ourselves and we don't have this programmable space that we can share and create some revenue for our town, not just for civic events, but for somebody, we have a lot of people that use our, our gazebo in the park to get married now. I've driven by and seen weddings over there.
We average about one a year and they're between 10 to 20 people that attend those.
But I'm talking about that, that ones that we may not know of, I don't know that they always book, but anyway, but if someone wanted to have a reception in, in Roseville, where would they do it if they had 150 to 200 people? Those are things that I'm trying to think, not just now, what we're doing in 2022, but looking at our needs further out.
Right. And so thinking further out, we do have, if you think about the farm, there is that event center that's about the same square footage. We have those cost estimates already done to build that as your true event center with your event lawn, that would hold 240, 300 people out there at that space. This building, the two store, or the multi-use facility here would give us that ability to at least start programming until we can get the funds to build a 40, 50,000 square foot community center, which we know won't be in the next five to seven year horizon for the town. So at least gets us some kind of programmability for our citizens that we can't offer today or in the near future.
So you're saying that it will address some of your needs?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
And you need it?
In my professional opinion.
Is that what you stated to me a couple of months ago?
I believe so, yes, ma'am. I said, we need it all, yes, ma'am.
And it's not. You said it wouldn't even come close to addressing your needs.
You're right, it won't when you're talking about square footage, but it's, it's better than not having anything at all.
As long as it can be programmed, it is. But if it's just gonna be a gym, it doesn't really address it, because what's the cost to rent, when we still have to rent facilities through the school?
It's not just a gym. So I want to clear that up, that it's not just a gym.
And that's my concern.
It's a multi-purpose programmable space and it's not just a gymnasium, that will not be just used for athletics. We would most likely still have to use the middle school gym, because our numbers, our town is growing and our participation numbers are growing. As you know, we're pretty much at capacity at all of our youth athletic numbers currently. So if we do add that, we probably will still have to use the gym. And we may have to use the gym on Saturdays, because we're renting our facility out. So there's that, that give and take. So there's programmable ideas that we already have and that we're projecting that we're gonna have to do. But we're never saying we're walking away from renting space, because as our community continues to grow, we will need space. Again, as, going back to our comprehensive master plan benchmarking, we need 40,000 square feet of indoor space. So my comment to you is, no, 18,000 doesn't cover what we need, it's not even half, but it's going to get us closer to where we need to be.
So I would like to know the cost though, because it's nice to talk about, we'll still have to do this, what's the percentages? Let's look at, what does it cost? What's the best use of that space? And that's something that I think we need to hear.
Right, and I think that hopefully those spreadsheets in front of you will help address some of that percentages as well.
You have a question here?
Programming, yes, ma'am. I don't have a percentage broke down, no, ma'am. But we can sit there and we can look at that and break down, we're, we're 50% program.
No, 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 I probably didn't say it right. I'm talking about the cost that we would still continue. You said athletics has, it's gonna continue to grow, I get that. So we'll have one gym that we can use for some of the space, but we'll still have to rent space, so what's that balance? And I know you don't know that number.
We won't know that, because it's, it's all dependent upon registration numbers. Same thing with our program, I mean, that we do the non-athletic or cultural programming.
You know the cost of the rental.
You can project growth, and you can project.
Right, but what I'm seeing right here today, I can't, I can't tell you what our numbers are gonna be once you build a facility.
But I said, I'm not expecting an answer today, but that's what I'm saying, a question in my head.
Okay, we can look into that, yes, ma'am.
How much would we have to continue to rent the gyms? How much of this need would it address, is the question?
I do have a question.
And I'll stop, because I've asked like 24 questions.
Yeah, Boyd, you won't be able to ask that many, so.
Well, I think she covered a lot. Okay, so I just, and I know this was a conversation you and I had, and I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't wrong in my assumption. Do you know of any towns that do not use their schools currently for programming? There may be some, I'm not.
Zeppelin may not, because they have the, their community center, so I don't know, I know.
Armory, right?
Correct. And I know they use that for their, their programming, so I don't think they use the gym anymore. Wendell may not, I have to double check with them.
I think I can answer, because I, you know, we meet a lot with the Mayor's Association, and I don't know about Zeppelin, you may be right, but just about all of them have, have joint use agreements with the county schools. And, you know, when I bring up about us sometimes, they say, well, why don't you have? And it, you know, we don't, we don't seize all the opportunities to have grant sharing. I mean, we don't do it at high school, for example, we don't have any.
Well, it's not that easy to get into a high school too.
But every other, every other county, town does it though. I mean, Wake Forest.
It is used, I'm not saying it's not, but I'm, I'm saying it's not that easy, because the high schools have a lot more going on.
Yeah, but it's just a matter of planning, because Wake Forest has, you know, joint, joint park, they have a lot of facilities, but they also have a big joint use with heritage. I mean, they use heritage, baseball fields, and I don't know if they use a gym or not, but.
I know they use the.
There were times that the town did come to Heritage and they were denied. But I don't know, there was more to it, but I'm just saying, they all have that. So I'm not disputing how big or how small, but I do know the high schools have a lot more going on with their programming, where you may not be able to use it as much as you could maybe in elementary school or middle school. But my other question was, I just want to make sure I'm understanding Sheila correctly. I always thought that this was gonna be a combination of programming for athletics and for events, but it was just a matter of the logistics on how you did it? Did I assume wrong? That was always the plan, right? To do both?
Yes, ma'am.
But you didn't feel like it was gonna happen that way?
And that's how our staff is planning out to do this as well.
I just want to make sure I'm on the same page, so that, you know, when things are said to me, I do fully understand, because that was always my understanding. I didn't think it was gonna be easy, but I think it would be doable. My concern was, I personally didn't want it to see, I didn't want to see it become all athletics. But I did want to see athletics take place in there, because I think it would be a good draw for the businesses that will be in that area, the restaurants, the retail shops. And I do understand that there is a need for events. But my concern with the events, or as I expressed this before, was, are you gonna have that many events that's gonna keep this moving, that's gonna keep that money, that revenue coming in? So that's where, and I don't think anybody knows those numbers right now. And I understand market for that, for that type of business, but I feel we need both. But I definitely feel like a little bit is better than none when it comes to athletics. But we can definitely use the event side as well. That's my take on it.
Right, and we agree with you as staff, all of our staff, all of our programmers, that's how they envision programming as well. And that's how we've embraced this journey, meeting with our consultants and as we design and can, with our consultants on how do we program this, those are the conversations that we're having, is how do we flip this facility around between maybe pickleball for, for seniors and an event coming in at 4:00 PM to start setting up for their event at 8:00 PM? So how do we, how can we flip the facility and use it? That's how we kind of did that mock schedule, to kind of show you how we would utilize the facility. Because you're right, there's not gonna be a rental every single weekend or every Tuesday night, but there will be sporadic ones that come. And we want to be consistent, we want to have these events, and we're gonna make sure it's available for those.
And when you put the word out that you only have events on these days, this day or that day, people will, the word will get out and people will ask for those particular days. At least from my experience, that's, that's what they have done. But I do have a question about the flooring, because I know it's not parquet flooring, which is very expensive. I don't understand what the rubber flooring is, but is adorable enough to withstand athletics and at the same time, chairs and tables? Is there a difference on how that would work?
Yeah, we've talked with our consultants about that, and I don't have the correct terminology to explain, it's an upgraded version of what's next door, so it kind of looks and feels like a hardwood, but it's got that durability of that rubber floor.
But you wouldn't have to roll out the mats?
No, ma'am.
You can, you can go to the, the church floor. My understanding that the hardest thing messes up a floor is high heels, believe it or not. High heels would mess up, if you have a formal thing, you wear high heels.
But see, if you have an event, and if it's a formal event, people are gonna be wearing high heels.
That's what I'm saying, that's what.
And they say I should cover that.
Yeah.
Right. So that helps me and the feedback that I've gotten from people, knowing that it's not gonna be a matter of trying to change on the floor. Because I know at my school, they would put something on the floor, and there wasn't a mat, to deal with indoor graduation, high heels. You know, sometimes you leave those markings on the floor and you gotta go through and.
I think Rose will do that.
Yeah.
I think Rose will put a mat down.
As long as we can see both, I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay.
With scheduling.
Well, that's, I think we got, we're hitting the nine o'clock mark here. So if I'm reading the, on page here, it says, this is review discussion agenda item. If the board is interested in reconsidering design and use of the facility, staff can put a pause on the current design phase until a final decision is made by the board. We're not supposed to make a decision tonight, I don't think, Kelly, so you need feedback, you know, we wanna, we wanna do something formal next meeting or what? Or do you feel like we need, the board feel like we need to do some kind of formal adjustment to?
Really up to you. I mean, I have put a pause, just because I don't want to go any further with, so the consultant is waiting till you all make a decision on the, and can, there's a lot of words we said tonight, we'll use "we," and I want to make sure it is "we." So when, when we all talk about programming, "we" are gonna make a decision how that facility, whatever facility is made is gonna be used and such. So when we are ready to make a decision, I have some further information I heard, at least Commissioner Sutton would like to see, and I suspect you all share that same interest, so we're gonna gather more information and feed it back to you, and when you're ready to give us some direction, we'll be ready. But right now, I have put a pause on the design, so.
I just don't want us to get stuck if we can't find.
We're gonna try.
Yeah.
Let us try and we'll report to you, and then you decide.
Yeah.
And if we don't find, if we find it, that's great. And if we don't find it.
You, you, we'll tell you.
All I'm saying is, because I haven't found it, my concern is, did they start that way too? That's my concern.
Right.
And if that's what we're gonna do, then say that.
Price is what we pay and value is what we get. That's by the great wealthy billionaire Warren Buffett. I think everybody probably heard of that guy, right? One thing with this project is that we provide a service to the town of Roseville. So, and we got to project out and forecast out, which I love that word, especially when you talk about money, because y'all know I deal with finances, and I love to forecast out, and I hate to be broke, definitely would not be that. So, one thing for the town of Roseville, as we consider, as we move towards the future, is that with the growth, and we already have been projected to, what, double in size within that's, what, five to seven to 10 years? So as our town grows, and our median income for Roseville is around $120,000 per median household, according to the 2020 census, we need to think about how we grow, and we need to grow in a strategic way. Just saying. Now, with the programs that's going, something that I think that probably could be added here is a after-school program for the children, which can go. I'd have look at the farm, which, that building, that event center, $3.4 million. It's safe to say that cost is probably wrong, because cost of material has went up. So we're gonna be facing this, and then as long as we don't make a decision on this, price of material is gonna go up. It's like the stock market goes up and down, and the property of houses has not. So therefore, building materials are gonna stay the same, if not inflate. So that's all I have to say, sir. I think that we need to really consider making another decision.
Yeah, I agree, yes. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, real quick, it's called a community center for a reason. I feel like if you flip to the last page of the handout we got, I mean, you're touching every group we would have in a community, and I feel like the, we're showing that this would be the highest and best use for this facility. So, I mean, I'm fine with more information than anything else, but so far, I see, what I like, what I see, I like, so let's go from there.
Are you saying highest, highest and best use only, or incorporated with events? Just so I can be clear.
With what?
Highest and best for athletics?
No, highest and best use for everything. I mean, if the last page has programming for anybody and everybody that could come into Roseville.
Gotcha, I just wanted to make sure everything was inclusive.
Do you want my comment?
I just would like to know, and when you gather some numbers, if you would also gather some numbers on events, revenues for events versus revenues for the programs that people are offering for a year on a, for an event space, the size of 240 odd people? With the time constraints or limitations on, with the time slots that you've given, about X number of hours a week or what have you, how much money does that look like it's gonna bring in? And I'd like to say that that would, sticking with this program, looks like there would be no basketball tournaments here.
With only one court, most likely you would not host any basketball tournaments, and with no facility in our nearby area, we wouldn't be an overflow gym for that either, most likely.
That would be at the schools, right?
Usually your tournaments are in your three, four court facilities are larger. If you look at what Kerry's building at the old mall, and similar to that, and what Rocky Mount has with their eight courts, that's the facilities that are hosting those large tournaments, so we wouldn't be.
Arenas.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was concerned that that might look attractive and that might overtake a weekend or a few months, but.
And if I may ask a clarification question, for fees, when you're looking at most of these facilities this size that are hosting large events, you're looking at non, or for-profit venues, obviously we usually have a reduced rate, so we're looking at their current rates, what they bring in, or?
I think that we should, and I think that our rates should be reconsidered, me personally, because we are, it is a service to our community, but it is, you also have to pay for the building.[1702.25] to pay for the building. You also have to pay for, I'm not saying that it needs to be the most expensive room in town.
Upper wall.
But I do think that costs should be taken into consideration, as well as the community.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we'll look at those, those venues and what their rates are, and what the hours would balance out to be.
But you can also give your citizens a break, and your non-citizens not such a break. I think we have to get out of financing the county so much.
And we do have resident, non-resident, so it may not be.
I'm talking about for events.
Right, we do that for rentals, there's a different fee for residents and non-residents as well. It may not be as much, but there, but there is a difference.
It's kind of small.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we're, we're going to pay for this with taxpayers' dollars. It should be for everybody to use. I don't feel like an event's going to touch everybody in a community. No matter how many events you have, and how much money you try to bring in, I think it's, it needs to be something for the actual community to use, everybody.
So Kelly, let's, I mean, I think Michelle made point of, you know, we don't want to keep it on hold for long, so let's, let's get that information, and either we do another work session, or maybe present it, and we'll do a consideration-type thing on the agenda, maybe. Staff report with a consideration, maybe, or something. Thank you. Meredith, how long is your thing? We may take a break.
I'll make it as long as you tell me, or as short. Shooting for the 30-minute mark.
Okay, well, most of them has missed it.
And I'm very disappointed by that.
So, so let's, let's go ahead and do a, a break to 9:15. I think everybody wants one, and you'd be ready to go at 9:15.
Sounds good.
And you think you can finish by 9:30?
I will try.
All right.
I don't know, there's two on there that I have a lot of questions about.
1,000 daily trips. And we've talked about that at the joint work session and just throughout the past several meetings. That doesn't seem to be adequate. And there was desire from you all, as well as the planning board, to make a change. So I do have a recommendation for you. I started off with two different recommendations, and I think my recommendation is a hybrid of them. So we could take our threshold and reduce it to 50 or more peak hour trips or 500 daily trips. And what that equates to, let me back up our threshold right now, the 100 peak hour trips or 1,000 daily trips equals about 100 housing units or 25,000 square feet of commercial space. So if we took that down, this would be about 50 residential units or 12,500 square feet of commercial space. Another example or thing we could do is look at what Concord has done. They have a tiered approach. They have four levels of TIA's. So everyone coming in has to do a TIA. The first level, if you're less than 50 peak hour trips, you do an access, location, and design review. And then you have a small TIA up to a large one based on the development. And I was thinking, as I was working on this presentation today, thought it'd be, could work for us if we did an access, location, and design review for everyone who's 50 peak hour trips or less, and then require the TIA at that 50 peak hour trips and above. So we'd always see something. I thought that might make you all more comfortable.
I don't know what you're talking about. I don't understand that.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Like, are you saying take less cars and less time, but you'll still come out with the same number at the end?
No, I'm saying, right now, we don't require TIA's if there are less than 100 units, housing units.
Right.
So I'm saying if we have 50 units or more, you have to do a full-blown TIA.
Gotcha.
If you have 50 units or less, you need to do an access, location, and design review, which is a mini TIA. So any one coming to you with a rezoning request would have some type of TIA for you all to review.
Hmm. So what if it's a smaller development, like 25 or 30 homes?
They would have to do this-
A neighborhood that's built out, like, or that's being built out, or not a neighborhood, but a street.
They could do this access, location, and design review, and I would still have the ability to waive a TIA if it's something that's completely small and built out and all the roads have already been improved, if that's possible. And we still have time to discuss these as we move through the process. This is trying to refine what our staff will be drafting as we move forward.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think the below 50 does the one and above 50 does the other one. It's-
And I looked at, just to compare, Wake Forest does three items. One, they don't require a TIA, same as our current threshold, and then they have a standard TIA for 100 to 500 housing units, and enhanced TIA for 500 units. So I just wanted you to have something to compare that to.
A median development is 500, well, 499. That's considered media?
For Concord, yes. I think for us, I, that's why I was, when I was looking at this today, I'm, that's why I didn't want to recommend that. I liked the hybrid, where we do a full-blown TIA if it's 50 units or more. And we do tailored scopes for each TIA. It's not a standard scope, per se. We look at the project, the nearby intersections, nearby developments, and work with the consultant and the applicant to scope everything out for that project. So we would continue to do that.
So just to be clear, so the medium development is somebody else's?
Yes, that's somebody else's.
Or 99?
Yes, so we can ignore that.
Okay. Then that's it, then.
Okay.
But these are, these are trips.
Yes. I prefer to think of it in housing units. My brain does better thinking about TIA's with housing units and floor space, I guess because I'm a planner, instead of numbers. I guess that's more the engineering mindset. So I see the homes make more sense to me, because I know what a neighborhood of 50 homes looks like versus-
The says trips, so I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm using the terms, I'm using the interchangeably speaking.
Okay.
Yes.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll move forward with that. Connectivity, we talked about at the joint work session. I think this can be brief. The recommendation to improve connectivity, right now, our LDO says streets shall be interconnected with adjacent streets external, external to the subdivision to provide multiple routes. So I don't know what that means exactly. Multiple routes means more than one. So I think, like to add some clarity to that by noting, we could implement access points as recommended by the traffic impact analysis. And if we change our TIA threshold, so everyone's doing one, we would have something to refer to for each development to make that work.
And I think it also should say, if there's already a stubout planned for the adjacent property, then you have to join to it.
Mm-hmm. I completely agree.
And, you know, that should be a no-brainer, but it's not. It's not a no-brainer. And, you know, but I guess we need to put that in writing.
Yes.
You know, you got to join.
That would be helpful.
If they have put it in or want to put it in, you got to put your side in.
Mm-hmm. I think that sounds great.
It's not been clear that that's in there.
It is not written out, so I think that would be helpful.
No, it's to developers.
To developers.
I mean, you can look on this, on her site today, and there's new neighborhoods proposed that has a stubout to it that they're not going to put it in. They're not showing it on their drawing, you know?
Right, each side is right, each, and those stuffs say, "There shall be a road somewhere in the future."
This is a real street?
Yeah. I can see if you're the first one there, you may have a choice, but if somebody had
already come there and we got approved plan, I don't see how you don't connect it, you know?
But Kelly, you're right, though. That's a real, no, did you say that? That would be a Realtor issue, because you would need to know that when somebody, you're selling somebody, huh? When you're selling somebody their house, and they're thinking, oh, this is never, like, you know what's happening in Carlton Point? That Realtor needs to contact the planning office to find out about it, because that can cause a lot of future problems. So I think that is important.
Really signage would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Future road will become a baby.
But at the point, what was it done when those people bought you? That wasn't approved. When we were trying to buy a house in Raleigh one time, 540 was on the books to come. And our Realtor, I was like, wow, that's a really nice house, and it was cheap. And I was like, why is it so cheap? And he said, 540 is on that map to come. And sure enough, those people back up to 540 now. But if it's not already slated to come there, you wouldn't know.
Right, as a Realtor, you wouldn't know. But at some point, Realtors do know, and they don't check.
Yeah.
And then you have the issues, just like you did, for an example, on, what is this, Lewisburg Road, where there's a house there right before the sign that says, "Welcome to Roseville," where they have a huge front yard. And then when they expanded on Lewisburg Road, that front yard was like, you know, instead of being out there to the table, it was like, right here where my laptop is. So that information is available, but people have to research so that they'll know.
Mm-hmm.
So we got sidetracked a little bit, but go ahead.
No, that's an example of why it's important to have that.
Yeah, I think so.
And you mentioned the developer, though, but how would the developer not know? That's the part I'm confused. Why wouldn't they know?
They would. They just choose, they just choose not to put it in.
That shouldn't be an option.
Mm-hmm. So having it in writing would be great. And same for pedestrian connectivity. Pedestrian connectivity connections should be made wherever possible. So I'd love to have something like that in writing as well to lean on. We don't need to talk about streetlight poles?
Nope. Check more from that one.
Do you want to get into the evidentiary processes, or would you like to save that?
I think, yes, what we talked about in the workshop, that we would, we would set up this board of adjustment that would handle these evidentiary hearings under Day's leadership.
I think you ought to go and see how it goes through your recommendations at different stages here. And when it comes back to you, is what your public hearing says.
And I notice you recommend not doing everything, just doing a limited number of stuff there.
And that still comes back to the board here. Or does it not?
With, the majority of our developments that are coming in are requiring a rezoning. So the legislative hearing for the rezoning will be in front of you. So that's your chance to help craft any conditions. Hopefully, it's conditional and you can do that. That's where you have your hand in creation with the development. So that's the first step. And after that, a neighborhood would come in with a major subdivision preliminary plat. And that was one, I was curious if that is something you all want to see or not, or if that's something you would want to send to the board of adjustment. For example, we have, we had the Pulte-Wade Avenue subdivision not too long ago. That was an amendment, and that seemed like something that would have been better off for the board of adjustment to go through, because it was an amendment. I don't know if you would want to see something the first time like that, or if you'd seen the rezoning, you're okay not seeing the preliminary subdivision plat.
I don't remember Wade Avenue, but I remember the, was it the point that came back to us recently? And I was sitting here like, why?
Why are we looking at this?
Yeah, I don't, it was like we saw it already.
It was like the townhome site plans that come through and the amenity center site plans, I definitely recommend those go to the board of adjustment. However, hopefully, we won't have those much longer, because those are leftovers from the UDO. So those are not going to continue to happen.
So which, which board is it that hears appeals? Like, if somebody wants to appeal something, are they going to the board of adjustment?
Yes.
Or are they coming?
Board of adjustment.
So what if this is something that the board of adjustment already said no to?
It would go to Superior Court.
Oh, damn. I mean, oh, darn.
Yeah, I don't think they can go to, it's gotta be a hardship or something, right? You got to prove it's a hardship.
That, that would be for a variance.
Gotcha.
Appeal is an appeal of a staff determination, and a variance is a petition to the body pointing out that, that the regulations of the LDO would work in injustice, given the unique characteristics or unique circumstances of a particular property, if the property owner was forced to comply strictly with the requirements.
Okay. Thank you. And one quick example for a site plan. We recently had 414 South Main Street, the former Pine Glow site in front of you for a rezoning request, and that was approved to change to general commercial conditional district. So because it's a conditional zoning district, that site plan, right now, as written in the LDO, would come back to you for review and approval. Is that the type of thing you want to see, or is that something you would want to give to the board of adjustment?
Kind of the initial site plan?
Yes, because there was no concept plan with the rezoning. It was rezoning, the, the condition had to do with excluding certain uses. So there's no plan that you have seen yet or that anyone has seen yet. So if and when that plan comes in, is that something you would still want to see?
I think if we've never seen it and we're going to vote on it, we need to see what we're voting on.
Okay, that's helpful.
Think about the revisions, the amendments, when they come in and they, what do they, or I kind of go, why do we-
Or if you've already seen something, the preliminary item, maybe you don't need to see it again.
You mean, like, after we all vote on whatever it is that, and then it goes to the board of adjustments?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For clarity on this, the board would focus on policy, setting the LDO, adopting policies, adopting plans, rezonings, which are ordinance changes, and you would set the policy, you'd set the gears, everything's working in order. And then the board of adjustment would be the judicial body that is hearing whether the plan complies with all of the requirements that require judgment, and limited to receiving evidence on each one, and then making a decision. And that is the end of the approval process, other than staff approvals that come after that for construction, drawing, and building permits.
So with the example that Mary just gave, where does it fit?
So that project has already come to you as a rezoning matter, and now the property owner will move forward with a site plan, presumably, which, for it to be approved under our LDO, requires a quasi-judicial hearing to ensure that it complies with all of the requirements, those judgment requirements, those findings of the LDO. And so the question is whether this board is better suited to make those findings a fact with evidence, or whether another body would be better suited for that, leaving this board to focus on items like this, which is setting the, setting the rules and let someone else carry them out.
Is that something that other municipalities give to the board of adjustments?
Yes. And the only variation on that is that some communities break special use permits in half and break subdivision, not in half, break them into two pieces. You could have major subdivision over, of a certain size, or a major special use of a certain category that you would always want to have come to you. I don't know whether staff would recommend that, but that is a way to sort of finesse that a little bit, rather than giving away everything.
What happens if the board of adjustments, they okay something, and then it comes back to us and we're hearing it?
It won't come back to you. That's it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So the, the final decision-making authority on the quasi-judicial piece would be the board of adjustment.
I guess I need to hear the worst-case scenario, because it's a lot.
The, the argument for is not just shortening your agendas so that they're more manageable, allowing you to focus. The, the other argument for is that unlike rezonings, which are legislative, unlike text changes, which are legislative, your hands are tied. You must approve these site plans and special use permits if they provide material competence, substantial evidence of all the findings. You can't vote no, even if you hate it. Now, the reason you may hate it is because they meet all the standards, but our ordinance is not quite up to snuff, which is actually where the board shines, is making sure we get the ordinance in order, which can only be done by the board.
There was a, there was a case that we, I don't know, had something to do with putting townhouses in the middle of large family homes. Was that on Wade Avenue? Do you remember?
That was a zoning, though. You-
That was zoning? Oh, okay.
Zoning cases would all still come to you. That was Wade Avenue, I believe.
Okay, never mind. Then it's not gonna-
So if something goes awry, it goes to the board of adjustments. Say it's a site plan, for example, the, for example, we just used, and it gets approved and it's gone, and then the public comes to us and says, "Why are you guys doing this? I don't know why you did that." Does that, do those complaints come to the board of adjustments or to us?
Hopefully, they're, they're coming to you, and you then turn back to the staff to look at changes to the LDO. That is, if the design is such that folks don't like it, it allows uses that folks don't want on a site that the board has previously rezoned it to.
No question, I think.
Okay? All right?
If, if the site plan, specifically talking about the site plan, if we release that to the board of adjustments?
Mm-hmm.
And say, Pine Glow, or whatever that, that community, they come back with their site plan, the board of adjustment approves it, because we said, oh, we're going to let the site plan go to the board of adjustments. If the public, after that's approved, somebody's coming and saying, "Why did y'all do this? I don't like this." Do they come and bring that to us to discuss, or does that go to the board of adjustment as an appeal or a variance?
No, any appeals would be to Superior Court.
At that?
It's, it's a final decision. Just, it was a final decision when this board decided it. The board of adjustment is the final quasi-judicial body at the town level. After that, it, it goes to Raleigh.
I can't remember, I've been, I've been on, I'm thinking, I'm sitting here thinking, I've been, been in 20 years, and I cannot remember the board not approving something in quasi-judicial.
We, we denied the Pulte matter for failure to comply with the ordinance which required mixed use. That's the most recent-
Was that two months ago?
Yes.
Yeah, like, two months ago.
That was quasi-judicial.
That was quasi-judicial.
But it wasn't a site plan. It was a-
It was a amendment to a special use permit under the UDO, if I recall correctly. Am I right?
Which, in the future, would be a legislative process.
No, it would still be quasi-judicial.
Under LDO?
Under the LDO. Special use permits are always quasi-judicial.
If it's a special use permit, then, if it was submitted under LDO, it'd be a mixed use, wouldn't it?
If they came back, they would have to do a rezoning.
And it'd be a mixed-use rezoning.
If that's what they wanted to submit it for, yes.
They would come back with a conditional rezoning, which would be purely legislative for this board's consideration. That's correct. And then after they received, for example, let's say it received your approval with a variety of conditions that had been proffered by the property owner and agreed to by the board, and something had been worked out, with those new rules for that site, a site plan would be created. That site plan, then, would be tested by the board of adjustment for compliance with the findings of fact. If it complied, then it would move forward to construction drawings and building permits.
So we've already given approval for it to happen, and then it goes to the, would go to the board of adjustments, the site plan, to see if that, I got it?
So it meets, meets the, the staff would determine that it, the staff and the body would determine whether it meets the objective requirements, which is usually something that's in the staff report. And then there are those subjective requirements. Does it protect public health, safety, and welfare? Does it impact neighboring property values? Those kind of questions would no longer come to the board of adjustment, but would instead go to another body.
We can talk more as we move forward.
I was going to say, can we just carry on and think about that one?
We can, we can, yes, yes. I'm going to skip to this one, talk about the landscape ordinance for a moment. I'm going to try something new and draw. So right now, our ordinance requires a perimeter buffer between just about everything. All parcels have a perimeter buffer around them. So we've had a couple of projects come in recently where that's an issue. One is dental office next to Bojangles, and another is with Walbrook. So just between two general commercial parcels, you have to have a 10-foot buffer, and it has a six-foot tall fence here. Landscape materials here. And this is the property line, this is the adjacent property, and this is, let's say, this is the new dental office over here, and here's Bojangles. So with the dental office, it's that this, this is an issue for us. We have a small site, we're having trouble fitting this on. And then with Walbrook, at your, your August meeting, you will see buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4. And building 1 is Publix. So Publix is right here, and here is the Publix parking lot. And then there are three other lots, 1, 2, and 3. And with this setup, a perimeter buffer would be required in those places. And when you have, you know, if you imagine being at a, at a Publix or a grocery store, it would be kind of weird to be walking out to your car and seeing a fence next to the drugstore over here or the restaurant over here. It doesn't really make sense. So I'd like to remove that requirement, to have the perimeter buffer between like zoning districts, and we can start with general commercial. Don't necessarily have to remove that for the residential areas. With general commercial, it would make sense. It's when you go into a shopping area, like, when you go into Walbrook in the future, you want it to feel like it's a cohesive design and space, and if there are a bunch of fences everywhere, it's not going to feel like that.
So moved.
All right. I probably should have left the Walbrook drawing on there. So if we're looking at, I want to jump to, I don't think we need to talk about the street buffers. The parking landscaping, we can, I think we can skip that. The issue with it is our ordinance is not very clear on what's required. It just lays out here, and this kind of island do this. And one thing I'd like to steal from the UDO is a requirement that states all parking spaces must be within 60 feet of the trunk of a tree, and that provides shade. Right now, we don't have that in the LDO. You could choose whether or not you want to do these internal islands in a parking lot, just the way it's written now. So I'd like to bring that UDO requirement back. And then, it sounded like there were some questions about the vegetation preservation.
Don't make me add more trees.
So, right now, if there is an evergreen tree that is, I believe it's 18 inches, and a deciduous tree, and 20 inches, I might have those reversed, where the deciduous was a smaller one and evergreen to them, those have to be documented. And if you're going to remove them, those need to be on a survey, and if you remove them, you have to replace them four to one. That's what the LDO says now. And all it says is with similar size and species. So that's unclear. I would like to propose replacing them one to one with a larger tree. I think if you're removing larger trees, you want to have something that's a decent size coming back. So right now, our ordinance requires a 2-inch caliper tree, and I would like 2 and 1/2 inch, 2 and 1/2 inch caliper. So it might be like this.
So is that like four or five years old, or not even?
Yeah, it's small.
Yeah, it's really tiny.
And so I would say, let's do something, you know, in the range of a 4 to 6-inch caliper tree is what you have to replace something you take out. And then with, there, you take out something this big, and instead of having four little ones, let's get one to one that's something decent.
Okay, so I have a question. So you said evergreen or fruit trees, right?
Say again, evergreen or deciduous?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said citrus.
So if you take out a certain number of deciduous, you should replace with deciduous.
But then why take it out?
It's in the, or something.
Yeah, why take it out?
Because you want to have a new grocery store, and some new restaurants, and some new infrastructure, and some nice connectivity.
So my biggest question with the whole tree thing is, like, we had an example in Walbrook, that we were taking out a 35-inch diameter tree, and we're replacing one tree, like, I, that's why, that's why I think it should be four, because I think, because I think you're going to take out, you're taking out big stuff. We have that minimum set, you know, that what you're taking out already. So, I mean, the more trees, the better. I, I mean, I understand, I don't know if we, we actually don't spell out where it needs to go. We're just saying you need to replace it.
Yes.
So, I mean, they have open space and everything else that they're supposed, they're required, so they should be able to find a place to put four more trees.
The developers I've spoken with over the past few months have said they don't know where to put them. They don't have enough space based on the, what they're doing in non-residential or mixed use, mixed use type development. I guess I'm somewhat sympathetic, but we can certainly leave the four to one if you're more comfortable with that. And I, I think we need to specify a size without specifying-
A size and a height?
Just be caliper.
It would be, just caliper will get you a certain height.
Or could you make it, if, if you take out a tree over such and such diameter, you have to replace it with so many? You see what I'm saying? Like, you're-
Yeah.
I think we might already, already have for the, that, the really big trees. I, I don't know that one off the top of my head. I know the other requirement pretty well, because I've been dealing with it. Well, let me, let me look into that one, and we can continue to.
I mean, I, I see it, too, with like, like a Walbrook, like, they do have a lot of open space, but, you know, it's going to be a, a big parking lot, too. So where do you put the other trees that you're replacing it with? So, I mean, I get that, too.
Sure. And that's one reason why I want to put that parking lot landscaping requirement back in there, so people are forced to put more islands in their parking lots.
But can't you put trees in of a certain height, like, make the requirement a certain height, versus taking your biggest tree out, replacing it with the big tree? That, to me, is a little redundant. If you're going to take out a huge tree, replace it with a certain amount of, what is that word again, Paul?
A caliper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Replace it with-
Yeah, I think you're going to get, but I think you're going to get like four to six inch. I think you're going to get, that's going to be about maxed out, to bring it in and drop it and let it grow. I don't think you're getting anything bigger than that, really.
Anything bigger than four?
Like, four to six inch, probably.
Four to six inch, what's, what height is that? What can that height, possibly? I mean, they're all different, I guess, but what are you looking at?
Depends on the type of the tree, but I should know this off the top of my head. I'm going to take a guess, and I will come back and verify that.
Because I've got trees about this size, and they're pretty tall.
Yeah, like 10 to 15 feet at least. I mean, they're going to be pretty big. Yeah.
Fortunately, these last two, you can dump on the planning board to sort out these
Fortunately, these last two, you can dump on the planning board to sort out these numbers, these heights, and this palette.
They will, they will enjoy that.
Because I know in some states, like, speaking of Publix's, the trees may be, I don't know what the word is called, but they may have a certain type of, you know how they all look alike? All the stores, wherever you go, you can pick out a Publix's. You can pick out the landscaping. You can tell, oh, I'm approaching a Publix's, I'm approaching a Hattiford's because of the landscaping.
Sure.
But it's different in different states. So, and I, I mean, I just say that to say that, to take one big one out, to put one big one back in. Again, leave it to the planning board, and hopefully I won't ask any questions that might.
That sounds good. Foundation types, I think I know what you all are looking for with this one. This is sort of a traditional crawl space look, and we've had some questions about...
The top right one.
The stem wall. And the stem wall is, I think, what we need with that, if a developer wants to use the stem wall as a minimum size, something that makes it look like a crawl space, because here's a stem wall example that looks more like a slab-on-grade. The slab-on-grade is the one on the left, the stem wall is the one on the right on this slide.
Yeah, I think we passed one one time, it had like 18 inches in there or something, minimum stem wall height. And I think that's what we need.
Okay.
Anytime you don't have a step to go up in the house, that's, that's the obvious sign that you don't, you got a slab.
Like, this one has several steps.
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, I think I know what you all want there. I'm gonna skip that one. I've had some inquiries from the development community about some different housing types that don't exactly fit into our LDO right now. I'm just looking for an initial reaction to what some may call a Charleston-style home or the narrow home, and that is a single-family detached home with a side setback on one side or smaller side setbacks. Just wanted to see what kind of reaction you have to that.
Yeah, I think, I think you, you may have skipped 5.1. Was it 5.1, one that...
Oh, the, yes, I thought that one was pretty obvious, but we can talk about it for a minute.
So you, and this, this is similar to 5.1. I think the thing with these things is they're great if you put them in the right place, but if end up, somebody wants this in the middle of a neighborhood where you have four or five acres you wanna develop, and, you know, it's not the right place to put these things. There's townhouses, the same thing, we see that. So, so I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how, because I could see this as great at the right place, you know?
Okay.
You have them over at Bra Creek and places like that, but you don't want them...
So something more like in an activity center, than neighborhood center district?
When, you know, something we designate as high, high...
Residential high, adjacent to activities and mixed use and not only.
That 5...
541?
Yeah. But I could see, I could see, I could see this coming into a resident, a regular residential neighborhood to put four, five of these in there.
Good. That makes a lot of sense.
And we'd have trouble with that, you know?
You're saying if we put that in there, it would be problematic?
Probably be complaints on it.
Yeah.
I agree with you, I just wanted to make sure.
So like Austin Creek has, yeah, Austin Creek has this, I think it's this style set up down through their main road, but everything else is like full-size, single-family around that. So it kinda, you know, you get your little setup, and then you have bigger houses outside of that, so...
Well, see, that's fine. If you design it like that, and, you know, it's all in design, people know what they're getting, I'm talking about...
Plopping it in between.
Whenever you try to come back and put it... I mean, if you tried to put this on Rogers Road, you know, I think it would be hard.
And one other to get a reaction from, in our ordinance, we have multifamily, and we also have assisted living, independent living, and the continuing care retirement. And this is a product or a neighborhood that would have a multifamily building with some cottages. It's a senior living product that would have à la carte services, so it doesn't fit the definition of assisted living. It's something in between multifamily and one of those senior housing products that we have identified in our LDO.
Where have you seen?
See, à la carte, meaning you can... Right, but it's not, it's you, it's, it's kind of like a mixed-use senior building, but it's not, it doesn't have any of the healthcare facilities with it.
Is there one of those around here? Are there one of those around here?
It's my understanding there's some that will be under construction in Apex and Charlotte.
Wait a second. Is this the same one about the person who inquired about this type of development?
That's possible.
Sounds like it. See, sometimes I feel like we set the stage for developers, which we should be doing, but with, with items that we need to see. I mean, this picture's not telling me much, but I feel like we set it, and then someone comes before us, and we're like, wait a minute, no, we don't have that here.
So what's in the middle of the building? What is that?
What's the...
Oh, so four-story unit.
Four-story amenities. I just wanted to get a reaction to this, if this is a housing product that we'd want to explore or not.
I would say no.
Okay.
For that type of product, unless there's more information.
Then we'd have to go into a high-district zoning, wouldn't it?
The density that this multifamily building is at is a higher density than what's allowed in our LDO.
Wow.
So we would have to up our high-density zoning to be able to do that, or we would just have a zoning for retirement communities, or what?
It would need a text amendment where senior housing could have a certain density in a particular district.
And this is just senior housing?
This is seniors only, yes.
So high-density seniors?
Yes. It's, yeah, high-density seniors, sure. I like that.
So higher than the highest density that we have already? Is that what I'm hearing?
This, yeah, this would be, well, the highest we have right now in the LDO, the town center district allows 20 units per acre for multifamily. In this, our residential high goes up to 12 for multifamily, and this type of layout is 16 units per acre.
I don't like it personally. I'm just saying, I don't. Especially for a senior complex.
Why is that?
Pretty standard where. Pretty standard where.
In some places.
Like, in the Midwest?
It's affordable.
In Raleigh?
Yeah. What is it, what's you don't like about it? What's the theme?
I don't know, I just think it's a, that's very busy.
It could be affordable for our seniors. Affordable housing.
No, Dan, not necessarily. If it's market price, it's not necessarily affordable.
So how many acres would that require, something like that?
I think they need about 10.
10 acres?
Because it's seniors does not make it affordable. Okay. You know, can you tell me a development where I can pull it up and take a look at? Do you know one offhand, or no?
I do not know offhand, but I'm sure staff can get that for us.
I would love to see a development like this, and where. So if you tell me like Cary, I'm like, I'm gonna say, oh my God, because, you know, they have a lot going on over there.
You tell me what it is, as dense as that is? In some places, 16 units in an acre is not very dense. I mean...
In some places, but we're talking about Roseville.
I'm, Roseville, I'm different.
In Roseville, it's dense.
I'm talking about Wade County, this place is 16 acres.
It's not, it's pretty...
16 units, acres is not dense.
And I, I agree with that, but we are talking about Roseville.
In Roseville, that, that would be a lot.
Yeah.
What's our current senior facility? Anybody know the density?
Of what?
The density of the senior apartments.
What is it, like 70 or 80-something units in that house?
73 units on...
That's not very big.
It's just the one that sit out, that's sitting out there.
I was just curious.
That's a lot right there.
That is all I have.
Oh, wait, hold on, you, number seven, the 30-foot streetscape buffer, I do, only require for thorough, thoroughfares?
Yes.
Add an 8 to 10 streetscape buffer for local and private streets?
Yes, just if other streets came on board, we would, just throwing out the option to require street trees.
So the 30-foot wouldn't count anymore?
30-foot already is, already is in place for thoroughfares, so we're talking about a smaller-scale street. We don't have, our thoroughfare network covers Roseville pretty nicely, so we'll have a nice presence with that, but on the chance that there are other secondary roads connecting those thoroughfares that wouldn't already have trees, this would be a way to bring in more trees along the streets.
Okay, then one last question is number three. With the poles, prohibits poles and prohibits wood poles in residential subdivisions?
Yes.
So those would be those, are they metal, steel?
Decorative, aluminum, different kinds of metal.
Would they be underground or above ground?
Decorative, streetlights, pretty ones.
Decorative, okay.
Yes.
They're streetlights.
We're trying to get away from...
I was wondering when she said that, I was like, oh, maybe I'm missing something. Gotcha.
I think all electrical stuff is underground required, right?
And I didn't touch on this one because at our joint work session in March, it seemed like everyone was on board with disallowing the wooden street poles in new neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have them in commercial?
Yes. I, we could disallow them there as well. I just thought the neighborhoods, we've, we've had some issues recently with a few neighborhoods wanting to put in the wood poles, and we were, we've thought that would be a mistake, and wanted to get something in writing that that couldn't happen.
So we got credit from Duke for that?
I don't think it's but one building in the nation would put in wood poles, but, you know? It's just one building in the nation that would do that. Most of them would put in steel anyway.
Okay, so... I've had a couple try to do it. I've had, we've had a couple try to do it.
So that's why I'm asking. So do we have any future plans coming in with wood poles in commercial areas?
Not commercial.
Okay.
Not commercial, right?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen any.
They're residential.
It's a resident, okay. I'm just looking at the wood pole here on Main Street.
Did you say steel? Steel poles, right? Commercial, okay.
We asked them not to do it, and they've agreed.
Okay.
In residential.
In residential. And commercials are already steel?
Yes, we have not had any requests for wood poles in commercials, we have an imp. [inaudible].
Any impending commercial wood, wood poles? All right, that's it. Thank you. Time for you to go home.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think if we fix is just say, no, no wood poles in any district, you know, for light, light pole.
For light poles, okay.
I agree with you, Ronnie.
Lights, lights.
I went over my, my 12 minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a little bit over. Appreciate that.